I'd like to call the September 26 regular session to order and ask Councilmember Back to please lead us in the pledge.
All rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please let the record show that all council members are present. And I'd like to thank the public that's here tonight. I apologize for our late start. All council members were present at the opening of the new Des Moines Elementary and this was seen as a very important thing. We have a great relationship with the Highline School District. It's a beautiful school. I hope you get a chance to tour it at some point if you haven't already, but that's the reason we're starting late. Is there any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, with your indulgence, I need to move the presiding officers and administration report up tonight. We have several guests here and a couple of key issues I'd like to address going forward. It's an exciting time for the city of Des Moines, primarily regarding Councilmember Back. On June 27th in Spokane during the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference, Rob was elected by the AWC voting delegates to become the newest member of their Board of Directors. It was founded in 1933. The Association of Washington Cities is a private, nonpartisan corporation that represents Washington cities and towns before the state legislature, the state executive branch, and with numerous other regulatory agencies. The AWC maintains a 100% participation from all 281 cities and towns governed by a 25-member board of directors dispersed by districts throughout the state. Councilmember Back now represents 16 of those cities in South King County. Those cities are Newcastle, Renton, Tequilla, Sea-Tac, Burien, Normandy Park, Des Moines, Kent, Covington, Maple Valley, Black Diamond, Auburn, Federal Way, Algonah, Pacific, and Enham Claw. This is the first time in the 86-year history of the AWC that a board member has been elected from the city of Des Moines. This is significant. It's a tremendous honor for our city to now be represented by one of our own. Rob was considered for this position after earning the Certificate of Municipal Leadership Award after taking numerous classes, workshops, and seminars offered by the AWC. But it's noteworthy to note that he earned this award within his first two years as an elected official. This has not happened before in the state of Washington. He then went on to earn the Advanced Certificate in his third year. We have with us AWC Board Secretary Kent Keel with us, and I'd like tonight to swear in Rob. And we also have with us another close friend of Rob's. And Rob, it's Pastor Gordon, but I'll let you introduce him when we get to the podium. So, at this time, I think we need, we would like the secretary to approach the podium.
Thank you, Mayor Pina, and Councilmember City Manager. My name is Kent Keel. I am the mayor of the city of University Place, and I'm also the incoming Chair of Sound Transit. Tonight, though, I'm representing AWC as the Board Secretary for AWC. And it is my pleasure to swear in one of our newest members to the board, as you all heard, Rob Back. Now, Rob, come on, come on up, please, and I'll let you bring up the other folks that you want to have with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. The two people that are most important to me tonight is my mayor, Matt Pina, mayor of Des Moines, and my pastor and former Dallas Cowboy, Gordon Banks, if you would stand with me when I get sworn in, please. And the Seahawks don't play the Cowboys this year, so you're safe, so it's all good.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Des Moines Councilmember Robert K. Back.
I, Des Moines Councilmember Robert K. Back.
Having been duly elected by the voting delegates.
Having been duly elected by the voting delegates.
Of the Association of Washington Cities.
Of the Association of Washington Cities.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and execute the duties.
Perform and execute the duties.
Of the Association Board of Directors.
Of the Association Board of Directors.
According to its bylaws.
According to its bylaws.
And will support the Constitution.
And will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
Of the United States and the state of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, I introduce to you AWC Board Member, Rob Back.
Please sit down. I wasn't sure what I was gonna say, but I'm gonna steal a quote from Bill Ruckel's house when he was presented with the Presidential Medal of Freedom. He said this, "I don't know if I deserve this or not, but I'm certainly not gonna give it back." So here I am, and just like being on the city council, instead of me trying to fit into this role, this role is gonna have to fit me now. And I wanna say a special thanks to my mayor, Matt Pina. Matt, something you had said to me four years ago, right after I was elected to council, and we hadn't known each other, we knew of each other, but we didn't know each other, and you wanted to have coffee and get to know me because we were about to work together. And you had asked me, "Why do you want to be on the city council?" And my simple answer was, you remember this, I said, "Because I want to have a voice and I want to be heard." And you gave me the best advice anybody could've ever given me, Mayor. You said, "That's good. You want to have a voice, that's good, but in order to speak, you need to learn how to listen." And a newly elected person or somebody who's wanting to be an elected person, they could've been offended by that. Who are you to tell me I need to listen? I know everything. That was the best advice you could've given me, but you gave this interesting parallel. You said, "If you think about a baby, when it's born, a child doesn't come out of its mother speaking. It comes out of its mother, listening to others, and it learns how to talk." So my first few years as a city council member, I've been listening, learning how to talk, learning how to be quick to hear and slow to speak. But I just appreciate you for your mentorship, and I wouldn't be here without you and without you, Pastor Gordon. So, Mayor Pina, I will yield to you. Thank you.
Councilmember Back, I think it's the wrong time to yield to the mayor. This is your ceremony. I will say that you have your Pastor Gordon that came quite a ways for this ceremony, and I, I think we ought to offer, we ought to offer this time at the podium to Pastor Gordon, so, for a few words.
Well, you know, I've, I, besides the fact that I played with the Cowboys, I got worse news. I went to Stanford. But, but one of the things that you recognize when you're, when you're in championship organizations, great organizations, you don't, you don't get there by yourself. It takes a team. And to build this great city takes a lot of individuals who are quality at what they do and very good working together. Bill Walsh, when he came to Stanford, he really didn't have a head coaching job and never been a head coach anyplace. Stanford took the flyer on him and hired him. And the first game we're playing was the University of Colorado up in Boulder. And it's a Saturday game. We watched a movie, some movie, inspirational movie on Friday night. I don't remember what it was. And he comes out and he says, "Tomorrow, the next day, we're gonna, we're gonna win the flip. The guy's gonna kick the ball. It's gonna be deep in the end zone. Just catch field and take a knee. And then we're gonna be first and 10 on the 20, and we're gonna run trips right, 386. We're gonna get seven yards. It's gonna be second and three." And he goes and goes through the whole ballgame for the first, like, 15 to 20 minutes, and we're sitting there going, "Who in the heck is this guy? I mean, how is he gonna tell us what's gonna happen the next day? This is unbelievable." So, we go to sleep, but we, we win the toss. The ball goes in the end zone. It's first and 10 of the 20. We run trips for three, right, 386. We get seven yards. And we march down the field like he had been there before. Well, we ended up winning back-to-back bowl games. Bill Walsh goes on to the 49ers, becomes one of the great Hall of Fame coaches there, every coach. I also coached, played for Bill Walsh, who was also, I mean, for Tom Landry, one of the great coaches that's ever coached in the league. And this, this, you guys have a great moment with a great team who are doing extraordinary things with great leadership. And I'm, and I'm glad to be here, to just be a part, to witness that, and to appreciate you. Thank you, Rob. Well done, and I appreciate what you guys are doing.
You know, Councilmember Back, since this is an extraordinary occasion and we have some folks that have joined us to help celebrate our city and your achievement, I think we ought to pin them.
I agree. I second that motion.
I know this is not your city, but you are now an honorary member.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. So, any visitors that were here for this, you may now leave. The rest of the meeting is quite boring, so thank you. Thank you, everybody.
At this time, I think we're gonna go to the administrative report, and I'll turn the microphone over to Michael Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor.
Rob, congratulations. What I'd like to do first, you know, council, at our budget retreat, we talked a lot about kind of some organizational changes that we've made and basically realigned the organization without really creating new FTEs, but taking advantage of some skillsets that we were able to identify and, and filling a few vacancies. And there are two people who I'd like to introduce tonight. Really excited, this is someone who's done a phenomenal job in events, Shannon Kirshberg. If you stand up. And, uh, events and facilities. Shannon is an absolutely committed employee to getting things done regardless of day or night, middle of the night, whatever it is. She was amazing, but she also exhibited great interest in emergency management. And we're pleased that ever since coming back from Emmitsburg, we've been able to slowly go in an arc of increasing resources for emergency management. And so we're excited because when Mark, our new Assistant Police Chief, joined us, he brought a wealth of experience in emergency management and especially first responder side of the equation. And now Shannon, we've made her the Emergency Preparedness Manager, and she will be filling in kind of all the, all the gaps in terms of relations with partners, planning, the, the community emergency, emergency management team, the CERT, the maritime emergency management. And so this is just a great opportunity for her to take the incredible amount of energy and skill that she has, focus it on emergency management, work closely with PD and fire and first response. And now Shannon, we've made her the Emergency Preparedness Manager, and she will be filling in kind of all the, all the gaps in terms of relations with partners, planning, the community emergency, emergency management team, the CERT, the Mer, the Maritime Emergency Management. And so this is just a great opportunity for her to take the incredible amount of energy and skill that she has, focus it on emergency management, work closely with PD and fire and first responders. So Shannon, thank you. And also, we have a new Deputy Finance Director, and Beth Ann, if you could say a few words about Sean.
This is Dan. I'm really excited to introduce Sean Hunstok, our new Deputy Finance Director. Our position, Cecilia Pollak left in April, and she was a finance manager, and we reclassified that position to a Deputy Finance Director. We're really lucky to get Sean. He's got years of, several years of experience in municipal government. He's a consummate professional in areas of finance and information services systems. He's a licensed CPA. He's worked at several cities, Auburn, Tackulla, Maple Valley, Edmonds. We're just super excited to have him here as we move forward with the upgrade of our financial management system. And then also our young staff, he teaches accounting, and so he's going to be a fabulous resource. So I'm feeling really, really lucky that he's joined our team. So, and if you want to, stop by and chat with him and, and introduce yourselves, and so I can't say too many more good things.
That's great.
Thank you, Beth Ann, and thank you, City Manager and Mayor, and I appreciate this opportunity, and I've dedicated 25 years to public service, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring that here to serve the city of Des Moines. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, welcome aboard and welcome to the team.
Thank you. I'd like to, to move on to a brief aviation update. The mayor and I attended the Highland Forum yesterday. Prior to that, last week, we had a joint aviation committee meeting with the city of Des Moines, city of Burien, representatives from Federal Way and also from Normandy Park. And just, you know, we're trying and trying to find the way that we can partner with the airport in the most successful manner to reduce the impacts on our residents. And we know that we suffer disproportionate impacts because of our proximity to C-TAC. And so we're, we're working on that, and now we're trying to join forces with other cities. We did a, temporarily suspended our participation in the C-TAC Stakeholder Roundtable because we weren't convinced that the level of transparency and trust was sufficient, and we're working on ways to try and remedy that. But one, one thing that I think is really important to acknowledge is we have some amazing legislative representatives. Senator Kaiser and Representative Orwell, and Representative Orwell especially, has been involved in the funding of the Ultra Fine Particle Study. University of Washington is currently undertaking the baseline impact studies called the Budget Proviso, that, working with the city of C-TAC and Department of Commerce and the other cities. Just focusing on aviation issues, being successful in bringing forth the siding of a second airport. That's a commission that's forming right now to, to move forward and start looking at that throughout the state. And so I just want to acknowledge Representative Orwell. She's been amazing, and Senator Kaiser, for their efforts. And finally, I'd like to let council know there's an item on the consent agenda for SCORE, the ILA, actually new business, that Tim, Tim will talk about. But I wanted to let you know that I went to SCORE yesterday, and it's a completely different dynamic financially. And Devin, who came and spoke with you, is doing a great job, but they also had the Washington State Auditor's Office pronounce a perfectly clean bill of health for the finances of SCORE, which I think is an awesome achievement. And so I just want to, that's pretty much the, our administration report, but just let you know that item's coming on the consent agenda. Thank you, mayor.
Counsel, thank you for your indulgence. I'm going to bring us back to our regularly scheduled programming, and I'm going to take us forward to comments from the public. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and the city in which you live, and you'll have three minutes to speak. The first person we have is Sheri Verberg.
Yes, hi. Sheri Verberg, Des Moines. And I'm here to speak about the development presentation we attended last week. So Mayor Pena and City Council, City Manager and staff and all, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. So many of you already know me and are aware of my love for and allegiance to this city and my respect for the work that you do. And I'm very excited about future growth and development opportunities that I heard about. Things like the harbor steps and the water features, extended outlooks, the open community gathering spaces, upgraded promenade and the Van Gasken possibilities, just to name a few. I also have some concerns, of course, and in general, I am quite concerned about the, what I understand to be unrestricted access to the steps, the walkways and beyond, to some of the structures and the elevator and, and the buildings that are going to be constructed and the occupants of those buildings, some of the rooftop viewing areas and the walkways as presented last week. You've done so much to mitigate some of the crime, drugs and other nefarious opportunities down at the marina with paid parking and all of the things that you've done over the last couple of years. I would just hate it so much, but truly believe that those concerns I mentioned will inevitably lead to an uptick in crime, noise pollution, air pollution, potential environmental issues with our sea life and such, and an invasion of privacy. Now, I realize this isn't just about me, nor the hundreds of folks that live all along the bluffs above the marina. It's much bigger than all of us, and I get that, and I support that, and I want to be part of it as well. But as a homeowner directly impacted by what does happen beneath and around us down there, I am requesting and expect that my city leadership will strike a balance between allowing development that promotes the tourism and the marina visitors and expanded access for all of us to the beautiful waterfront, and allowing development that directly threatens the safety, security, privacy, right to quiet enjoyment, and of course, the views of current Des Moines residents living all along the subject areas. So most of us have chosen our homes here for those very sacred amenities, and I for one will continue to stand up for them, and thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joyce Ramirez.
Hello, mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me have this moment to talk with you. I am resident and president of the Portside Condominiums, which is located at 226th and Sixth Avenue South, and have discovered that there is going to be a rescue for sea lions and seals built right directly next to our building at the south parking lot of the marine deck. And there's been some major concerns because of this. Finding out after the construction is already being started and wondering, even though I'm all for animal rescue and, and environmental issues and our wildlife, why, as, as a very high-paying taxpayer for the marina, why we were not put to a vote for something like this? Why was there never a proposed land use sign for this type of center going in next to our building? There was a land use sign constructed for six months prior to Anthony's putting a sign before their restaurant, and nothing for this development has been proposed. I would like to know what's being done maybe for containing the noise that's going to happen with loud barking sea lions right under our windows at 3:00 AM? Is, is the smell going to be contained from the outside pools? And just wondering, with the design that's being, it says, "Access to the site is controlled as federal regulations require the entire site to be secure at all times. This is very important for the safety and security of the animals and people working and visiting the site. To that end, the entire site perimeter will be fenced with eight-foot-high chain-link fence, including anti-climbing material at the top, which I assume is barbed wire, that will include a mesh to serve as a visual barrier to protect the animals from becoming habituated to people." So again, I'm wondering possibly why Saltwater State Park wasn't a better location where they don't have all the people that the marina has coming and going. I just needed to voice those, and, and I don't know if you have answers or how I would go about getting those answers.
Thank you for your comments. I can give you a few answers right now. We also intend to provide written communication to your location, your folks, and also we'll come in person and talk with you if, if that would be helpful. Just let me tell you a couple of the things. Yeah, the fencing, that does not necessarily imply barbed wire, and it would be our preference that that not happen. We've worked with, we've talked with the Arts Commission about possibly putting art within the fencing, just to make it look more interesting. The building is not going to be higher than approximately 15 feet from grade, so it's not going to be more than one story. There will be tanks. We've been assured by S.R. Three that both noise and any, any smell coming off the animals, that that's not, that's something that they will mitigate, and we want to work with the, the community because we want this to be a successful venture. We feel that this is, you know, a dynamic of interface with our natural environment and that, you know, provides relief for, for animals. I believe the only hospital, this is the only hospital in the Northwest, otherwise these animals are transported to California for, for, you know, healing. There'll be a couple of storage units there. There will be a couple of tanks, and, and you're right, there are federal requirements relative to, to the fencing. But we appreciate you bringing this to us, and we intend to send you written communication, and then we'll come meet with you. You know, if that's your desire to talk about this.
I would like to know how it all came about without any of, any of the things I mentioned as a taxpayer at the marina to have the right to vote or a land use signs of any kind, why, why none of that was done.
Yeah, well, these, this came before council a couple of times. We've had the discussion. We'll, we will provide answers to you in writing to those questions. Yeah, we'll put them on the website, sure.
Okay, that is all who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council that didn't sign up? Okay, seeing no one go forward, that'll take us forward to board and committee reports and councilmember comments, and we will start with Councilmember Back.
Thank you. I'll keep this fairly short because we've got a long meeting. On the 13th, I attended my first AWC meeting. It was a chairman's circle luncheon at the Seattle Convention Center, and they were actually honoring the man I spoke of earlier, Bill Ruckelshaus, who has done so much for community good and problem solving. And their keynote speaker, he's this guy from the radio. Everybody's heard of him. Now I can't remember his name. Who is this guy? Anyway. Oh, Robert Siegel, yeah, well-known radio broadcaster for years. Anyway, enlightening meeting. I, I'll be putting information in fellow councilmembers' boxes if you're interested. On the 16th, I attended a meeting held by Representative Orwell, where she is wanting to address the port, airport packages for noise abatement for the second runway, and there are numerous folks that have had the airport packages, myself included, where some of these windows and the doors and the ventilation system, the sound insulation on the walls, up in the ceiling, some of them are failing. There's issues with mold coming in the windows, so I appreciate Tina Orwell for wanting to find out who is having issues with their existing port packages. And I think it's important that she's addressing this now because not only do we have to mitigate the third runway, there is still issues with the second runway port package that also needs to be addressed. I really appreciate Tina's proactive approach on this. So if you have a port package that was installed to mitigate the second runway and you're having issues with a failed package, whether it's mold in the windows, windows that you can't take apart to clean, or any of that, please contact Representative Orwell's office and let them know what your situation is because they are taking an ongoing survey, and she's doing a good job with that. On the 17th, I filled in for Councilmember Mahoney at the South County Transportation Board. The primary thing that was shared was this upcoming initiative 967, which we are all going to see on our ballots, which is going to reduce car tabs down to 30 bucks. And that is going to be a huge hit for Des Moines as far as Transportation Improvement Board dollars and our street repaving program. So there's a number of cities that are making resolutions to make a stand as a city that they don't support 976, but the voters are going to do what they're going to do. And at this time, the polls that I've heard, it sounds like it's going to be fairly close. You know, a lot of people vote because they just don't want to pay higher tabs, and I can understand that. But if you don't pay for the roads to be paved, then you can pay for better shock absorbers and tires more often for your vehicles. So we will see where that goes, but that was the primary focus of, of the AWC speaking at Skateboard. On the 23rd, I went with Councilmember Banks and Councilmember Buxton to attend, it's kind of, kind of eye-opening, but a group called Business Ending, Businesses Ending Slavery and Trafficking, BEST, is their acronym. And we got to sit in on a session where people can get a certificate of completion, and they were, at this session, speaking to the hospitality industry. So people in the housekeeping division of hotels, people that work at the front desk, people that deal with food services in the hotels, how to spot potential human trafficking, pimps that are operating, people that are victims and actually being used and sold into prostitution. It was kind of an eye-opener for me. I know this is out there, but to actually sit in and hear some of the details, it was alarming. It was alarming, and, but it's a reality, and I just, I will never forget that the Green River Killer was raised right here in this community, and so it's because of this type of activity and adult-oriented businesses that we have a lot of issues. So Louisa and Tracy, you may want to speak to that more, but I was glad that I went. It's not an easy thing to listen to, but it's important to be aware of, so. And then the last thing tonight, all of us went to the Des Moines Elementary ribbon-cutting, and we had to skedaddle before the ribbon actually got cut so we could be here to the, to the council meeting. So that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks.
Thank you. So quite a few. I'll get through them quickly. I feel like I haven't been here in a while, so I may be redundant on some things. We did the Betts Redondo Boardwalk Plaque dedication on the 9th, and that was extremely well-participated, participation by the Betts family and local citizens. I went to the State of the City at North Hill Community Center on the 10th, and then we had, of course, the 9/11 Memorial at South King Fire. That was very heart-wrenching, but it's something we should never forget. 9/13, we all went to the Mount Rainier football game, and they won 40 zip. Totally amazing. Yeah. And then, of course, there was a sobering moment of silence for one of the Rainier students and football players, as we all know, Juan Carlos Conguzman, who was found murdered. Attended the Quiet Skies Forum for the Port of Seattle Commission candidates. That was very interesting. They had Cho Degenger, Degenger and Jacobson, so the, I believe it's on the Waterland blog, so anyone can, can take a look at that. Participated in the International Coastal Cleanup. Participated in the International Coastal Cleanup Day at the marina on the twenty-first. This is the second year that Mast, Marine Science and Technology, has participated, and of course, many citizens. I'm going to leave the full report to Councilmember Mahoney, but I, I'll tell you, I brought in five pounds of garbage in just one hour. I mean, it's just amazing, amazing. What I, yeah, it is very sad. And so, one thing I would strike, say is those people who are running the trail in the beach park, the one thing I did notice, and I walked that trail as far as I could, and then I turned around, it's amazing, the junk that you see in the bushes and stuff. And we have to help staff because they can't do everything. So, you know, if you're running or you're walking, take a bag with you and some gloves, and if possible, just pick up whatever you can. Then, today, I attended with our chief, Thomas, the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee meeting. It was centered around a presentation on King County Regional Homeless Governance Authority. I know all of you are going to glaze over, so I'm not going to really talk a lot about it, but it's a coordinated effort with King County and the City of Seattle to procure or establish a, an opportunity, rather, to pull together services that help homeless people. It's a lot larger than I'm talking about, but it's certainly a, and I don't think we disagree that there needs to be combined resources and better ability to use the financial resources that are, you know, provided by the federal government. But we have many questions because it seems really fast that this has been happening, even though it's really been presented over the last year, year and a half. So Sound Cities Association, which we're a part of, Public Issues Committee, which Councilmember Buxton's on, and the Skip, South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership Program, which we have nine cities and King County involved in that, and I represent that as a council member, have many questions. They're actually pulling the questions together as well as making sure that King County knows there has to be a full discussion on this. Because we just, you know, we just got an opportunity to get funding, or secure funding from fourteen-oh-six, which is taxes from the state. So we have many questions about where this funding is going to be coming from, which essentially is like a hundred and thirty million that the county and the state, or the city, are trying to pull together to combat homelessness. Again, many questions, we don't have answers. So there's more to come. But what I would say, Mayor, is that the presentation was provided by, let me give you exactly their names, if I hope I wrote it down. It seems like it's King County-driven, that's, that's King County and Seattle-driven. So Rachel Smith, who's Deputy County Executive, Department Director, Leo Flohr, from the Department of Community and Human Services. During the presentation, they gave their presentation to a number of cities. We were not on there. And so I would strongly recommend that maybe in November, we invite them to come to a working session.
Can you share those names?
I will, I will pass this on.
Clerk and clerk, we'll look and see what kind of availability we can get.
That we would have. So that, to your point, for the hospitality presentation by BEST, the one thing that I walked away with was, we are, we are getting a lot of, and I know we'll be talking about this later, a lot of the problems that come from the City of Seattle, and that's been happening for a long time. We know that. It comes south. What I would encourage anyone and everyone to do is if you see something that just isn't right, you see a child with someone who just doesn't look like a parent walking the streets, or someone young, or a woman who, you know, perhaps, you know, you could be wrong, but perhaps looks like she shouldn't really be there, because I noticed that one day in Bartel's parking lot, call nine-one-one, because they will respond. And it's better to be wrong, right, than to have someone that's caught in this vicious cycle, because a lot of this is also labor-related. There are those organizations out there that bring in immigrants from all over and force them to work for absolutely zero pay, and living in conditions none of us would want to live in. So it's not just, it's not just the sex industry, it's also the labor industry. So those are things we really have to pay attention to, excuse me. And I just feel it's, it's our duty as citizens in this city, as well as Kent, as well as Federal Way, as well as C-TAC, all along this corridor, that we pay attention to what's going on, because sometimes we don't. We just sort of, you know, put it in motion, and you go forward, and you just get to the store, and you turn around and you get back, but there's a lot of stuff going on. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettie?
All right. Councilmember Beck and Councilmember Bangs pretty much covered a lot of it, along with doing the Des Moines Park Run, a five-k every Saturday at the beach park with the family. And the market is coming to an end. This Saturday will be the last market, except for the holiday market. I did participate, and the four of us, the wife and kids and I, just walked from Anthony's, I'm sorry, from the fishing pier down to Anthony's and back up the other side, and we gathered three pounds of trash.
Awesome.
Just in that small amount of time. So, yeah, people are tossing things everywhere. And then I did want to mention that we're just nine short days away from the Des Moines Police Foundation Auction, October fifth, from five to ten at the Four Points on two-twenty-fourth and Pack Highway. Tickets are seventy-five dollars. A table of ten is seven-hundred bucks. Last year, we did it at the Field House and raised the money for the K-9 and moved on from there. You can purchase your tickets at desmoinespolicefoundation.com, and I hope to see you guys there. They're almost sold out, so hurry up and get your tickets. That concludes my remarks.
Before I switch, Councilmember Nettie, you're right, the foundation covered the cost of the dog last year, but wasn't, didn't they go way over and do Shop With a Cop?
They did, and funds went for actually not just the purchasing the dog, but the training for the dog and the officer, and money went into the bereavement fund and also Shop With a Cop, which we did forty families last year, and the Port of Seattle said we wanted to do eighty this year. So they just had their first meeting today. I don't know how that went, so, haven't seen the wife yet today, so.
I think that's the point, though. This is a tremendous foundation, and it's a way that the community can show the support for the men and women that heavily fortify themselves every day for our safety, and so...
And, sorry, Mayor, and this year, we were trying to raise funds at the auction here to place an AED in every officer's car.
Replace a what?
An AED, an automated defibrillation.
Oh, it's a defibrillator, okay.
Electronic defibrillator. It's a portable defibrillator to place in officers' cars. We all know that fire and the aid cars try to get there beforehand, but most of the time, it's an officer that shows up on scene, and if it's a, it's a person having a heart attack, the AED has been proven to increase the chances of survival. So, and I think we only have two or three within the department, and we're looking to purchase fifteen of them, and they're about a thousand dollars apiece, and that would outfit the detectives, code enforcement, and the rest of the officers' rigs, so.
Now, the one thing I'm not going to do is go to Deputy Mayor Pennington right now because he'd say then, then the fire department will come in and show you how to use them. But I'm going to, I'm going to, oh, he's gonna. Here we go.
No, Mayor, I wasn't going to say that. I was just saying, it just confirms my theory that every cop really wants to be a firefighter, right?
Oh, I knew that one wasn't going to slide, so I figured I might as well open the door. Even our chief is smiling. Okay, Councilmember Buxton, please start soon.
He's trying to skip me on purpose.
No, I will come back to Deputy Mayor Pennington.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, boy, I sure appreciate my colleagues and the events that they attend, the engagement that this council participates in in this community. I'm inspired and impressed, really, by my colleagues. I attend as a liaison to the Human Services Advisory Committee, and we held our committee meeting this month at Child Haven, which is one of the facilities that we support. Our community supports several agencies that provide services to our community, and so this is one of them down in Auburn. Fabulous community. It's a, it's an educational facility for, the services are free for children up to six years old. And not only do they provide education, you know, from infancy, actually, infancy up to six years old, but adjunct services for parenting skills and things like that. So if you qualify, it's a free service. It's amazing. And so I was impressed and proud to be a community that supports this agency down there. Just a reminder, we have one last farmer's market this weekend, it's our Harvest Festival, and then after that, we do have a holiday market on November second. That was very well-attended, very festive last year, should be a great little market. Then, a couple comments in regard to the unanimous consent agenda. I am just so thrilled. Great work to our staff for acquiring all these grants, number three, number seven, number eight, and number nine, all these grants. I'm just so impressed with our staff. Item number six, I'm always pleased to support our law enforcement in making our community safer. That's in a little, something that if it passes, we're going to enact for safety in our community. And in regard to item number four, this next month coming up, October, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we are going to be making a proclamation. And so I appreciate our city acknowledging that issue in our community, in our region. And so one, a couple things I'm going to do, just as participating in awareness, this Saturday at 5:00 PM, there's a Take a Step Run at the Covington Pier. When Covington has made a global name for itself in creating awareness in the domestic violence arena through their event called Purple Lights Nights. And so that's their kind of opening event, is their five-k run. And also, next Saturday, so the Saturday after that, at 5:00 PM, is the Purple Lights Nights Run in Algonah Pacific, another little five-k. It's at their elementary school. So I'm going to do both of those. Super nominal fee for participating in a five-k. It's amazing how much you have to pay for a T-shirt these days if you want to run a five-k, and these are very nominal. The fees support the advocacy and awareness and education in domestic violence. So if anybody's interested, you'll see me there. Well, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't go into several of the events that I attended with my colleagues that they've already mentioned. I will talk about a few that weren't mentioned. We, several of us, Councilmember Nettie, Beck, and Deputy Mayor Pennington, we all attended the community festival at the Baptist Church that's across from the Mount Rainier High School. They have a new pastor. Guess what his name is? Rick Church. I thought that was pretty great. But it was a great event. There was a few hundred people over the time there. It was a nice community. Unfortunately, annually, that's, it rains every event they have. I think we were there last year and it poured, first time it had. But it was, it was a great event. We had a State of the City at the North Hill Community Club, and we were absent both our mayor and deputy mayor, and so we were allowed to roam free. I thought Councilmembers Nettie, Bangs, and Beck did an awesome job. They did most of the talking. I know that's a shocker coming from me, but, but yeah, no, it was, it was a great event, and it was, kind of went over the new presentation, and it was, yeah, it was a good event. A couple comments, yes, we kicked some butt on, we kicked Jackson's butt forty to nothing at the football game. Mayor leaned back to me and said, you know, I went to high school at Mount Rainier for three years, and I saw more touchdowns tonight than I saw my entire three years I was there. But the cool thing is, is the next game's October fourth. This coach, Coach Mack, is a very impressive individual, he's very humble, but he believes his players to do community service in lieu of, in lieu of practice sometimes. And he, he's the kind of guy where if a player misses a class or comes in late, well, they have to dress in the away uniforms and then be the water guys for the rest of the team. So he teaches humility, he teaches them community, he teaches these student athletes, you know, how to be young men and women in the, in the future. He's worth supporting if you get the chance. Also, not to say, we also have some students at Federal Way High School, so we got to go there every once in a while, right, Eric? The biggest one I want to talk about today, though, was the coastal cleanup. It was a really great success. I see Casey back there from SR3, thank you. But there was, there was about a little over a hundred volunteers, I think, in the end. There was over twenty divers. You want to talk about participation, we had the City of Des Moines, several council members, we were hanging out together at times. We had Eight-Dive Shop, we had the Seaquest, or the Ocean Quest Charter Boat, we had Washington School Alliance, our own harbor master, and he was there putting up garbage, Mass Center, of course, Susie Novak from the Farmer's Market. We had, I think it was Bill and Patty Linscott, and we had, what, the Yacht Club, the Des Moines Marina Association, the Poverty Bay Power Squadron, and the Three Tree Point Yacht Club. I got all those in one shot. But the amazing thing was, is we, we brought up three-hundred-and-ninety-eight pounds of debris. It ranged from everything from fishing tackle and fishing poles to cell phones, a few urns, of all things that you think you'd find, abandoned crab traps, things like that. But what it was, was our community showing efforts in a jointed effort. Was there, I got a whole phrase and statement to read, or?
You know, I just wondered.
Oh, yeah, wow. Anyway, but it was, it was united by all fronts. It was, it was, everybody participated with enthusiasm, and we helped our environment. It's amazing. The stuff we removed just in the diving will save several of our species fish's lives that they would have otherwise succumbed to. I can tell you, there's a video out on Facebook, it got posted by the city. I'm the guy with the knife, like sea hunt, and I'm really cool, but, but you'll see kind of the work we have to do underwater. It's quite spectacular, and you burn a lot of air and energy trying to wrestle stuff out. But I caught lines of fish that were attached that they would have just inevitably died eventually, things like that, where they get hooked in some of the debris below. It's, it's quite shocking what's down there sometimes. And, and along with the land efforts, we were, we removed hundreds of pounds of trash from our marina and our pier. So my kudos to the entire community, because I thought it was a community effort. And with that, Mayor, that's all I got.
That's good. And now to Deputy Mayor Pennington.
Thank you. I was out of town for the last probably week and a half, so I missed a lot of these things. I did make it to the community festival and Des Moines Elementary and the Betts Family Boardwalk Dedication. They also had a wedding, they had a family, a couple family members that wanted to get married, so they got married in, in the park across the street, so. And I would also like to thank again Rick Johnson for actually bringing this to our attention and forwarding the idea of, of the dedication to the Betts family and everything that they did for the Redondo community, and actually, you know, that was, that was a number of years ago, and, and today, it really, still, they set it up for a place for somebody to come, for families to come and fish and enjoy the beach and do a little boating, and you look at what's there, and you look at really the remnants of their marina is the, is the pier that's down in Redondo now, and, and they, their impact to our community continues several decades, you know, later. So it was really nice that, to have... So, it, it was really nice that, to have that. It was nice to, to see the, the number of people that were there for that celebration. So, anyway, and it struck me as I was sitting here, of all the things that has gone on really in the last couple of weeks, and you think about that. Think about everything we just heard tonight. That's a lot of stuff by a lot of people, you know, the, the council, the citizens, I mean, everybody. Think about that. That's a lot. A lot of involvement in this community, and I'm really proud of that. So, thank you all for, for doing that. That's it.
Thank you. I don't really have a lot to add. You guys covered everything really well. I mean, the, we're going to have our consultants here to talk more about the redevelopment ideas. Really appreciate the comments. Keep them coming, because there's a lot of things that people think about that, you know, we may not, or may not get thought about in design or whatever. So, those are really important to us, and that's, that's the way we get it done right. And then the, and it was, it was a great community meeting. I want to thank the, you know, Bill Lindscott and the Yacht Club for, and putting that together. And I'm sure Patty, you had your hand in there somewhere. But it was, I think there were 200 to 250 people there. And that was a great turnout. So, that's the kind of stuff that we like to see. The other thing is, you know, the, the football game, it, it is truly more points than I ever saw in three years at Mount Rainier. But, you know, teams come and go. They're only there for a little while. It's the same with, with college and so forth, and there's no draft supposedly. So, I, I think that the, the interesting thing is that it is really inexpensive entertainment for an entire family. And we have, you know, several high schools around us. We're part of two, two really substantial school districts. So, you know, Friday Night Lights, it's not just for Texas, you know. Think about it. You know? So, anyway, enough with that. Michael has an announcement, so I'm going to turn it over to him and then bring us back to our program.
Yeah, thank you. This goes under the category of late-breaking news. Have Dan Brewer give us an update.
Evening, Council. As you know, we've been working with Highland School District on a portion of the Barnes Creek Trail in frontage their school on 16th Avenue. You probably saw part of that this evening when you were there. Earlier this year, we had applied for a grant from Sound Transit to extend that from the Des Moines, New Des Moines Elementary there, up towards Highland Community College, or Highland College. And literally late-breaking news on the Waterland Blog, it looks like we were successful in getting that $2 million from Sound Transit to extend the trail from. I wanted to say, you know, a few weeks ago, King County Councilmember Dave Up the Grove came down to look at our project, went on a tour with us, and just want to surely appreciate his support for our community and the, and the project. So, anyway, more to come.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to take us into two items of our new business. And we'll start with the recycling rate adjustment, with the staff presentation by our principal planner, Laura Tachiko.
Good evening, Laura Tachiko, Principal Planner. The City of Des Moines has partnered with Recology for solid waste collection since 2011, and they've been a very interactive and proactive partner in that, with a joint emphasis on waste reduction and recycling. About a year ago, they approached the city. Thank you. About a year ago, they approached the city with a requested change to collection rates in response to major disruptions in global recycling markets. And other companies have made similar requests of the cities that they served. Since then, the city's been coordinating with Recology and their other contract cities to come up with a unified approach that incorporates lower rate increases, but expands education and outreach that teaches on what, what is recyclable and how to prepare items for reci, for collection. Since that time, the cities of Burien, Sea-Tac, and Shoreline have approved contract amendments. So, Recology and staff have met twice with the Ad Hoc Franchise Committee in August and September, and we developed the draft contract agreement amendment that's being presented tonight. And we have Quinn Apuzzo and Kevin Kelly with Recology here, that will go into a little more detail on that amendment and then other, other items that are impacting the 2020 rates that are coming up. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here tonight. My name is Quinn Apuzzo, Government and Community Affairs Manager with Recology, and I'm joined by Kevin Kelly, our General Manager. And as Laura said, tonight, we're here to give you an update on some impacts to the 2020 solid wa, solid waste rates. And I know you've got a packed agenda, so I will just dive right into it. So, there's two primary factors that are going to be influencing the 2020 solid wa, solid waste rates. The first is the annual inflation adjustment, and then the second is this issue with international recycling markets, which I'll talk more about in a moment. So, we'll start with the inflation adjustment. This is an annual adjustment. It's part of the base contract, and it was designed to keep rates consistent and aligned with inflation over time. The calculation takes into account three regional indices. And over the past three years, the, the annual inflation adjustment has ranged from the, the negative side, so negative 0.2 to 5% with an average of a 3% increase. This year, we saw a little bit of jump in, in the annual inflation adjustment. It's at around 13%. And so, we wanted to share a little bit about why that is. Some of you may recall, in 2018, on the Canadian border, there was a pipeline explosion, a natural gas pipeline explosion. This is a pretty unusual incident, but it resulted in a significant jump in a natural gas fuel prices. This is primarily what's driving the, the increase in the inflation adjustment this year. The explosion was obviously outside of Recology's control, outside of the city's control. The good news is that we have seen natural gas prices return to their normal, normal range, and we have no reason to foresee another situation like this occurring. So, in terms of looking forward to the 2021 rate adjustment, we fully expect that to fall back in line with what we've seen historically. The second factor impacting solid waste rates is related to a recent fairly dramatic change in international recycling markets that, that's had pretty devastating impacts on local, national, and even international recycling programs. So, by way of background, in early 2018, China effectively ceased to import recyclable or waste materials. Now, this is important, because for the past 30 years, China's been the biggest consumer of recycled materials generated in North America. China's really been kind of the linchpin of our, our recycling system. And if we go back to kind of Recycling 101, really the way that the system works is, when we think of that chasing arrow symbol, is, is consumers purchase products, we recycle the, we collect the, the waste material. It gets purchased by a manufacturer to be returned to commerce in the, in the form of a new product or service. And again, China's been about 50% of this business, and China is, in, in that sense, China has been the purchaser of our waste materials. And that's important, because, because the revenue generated from the sale of recycled commodities has largely helped fund recycling programs. There's, I think, somewhat of a misconception out in the, the general public that recycling is free, and it's not. There's significant cost associated with providing curbside recycling service. We have to pay for the trucks, the carts, the, the drivers that, that come to your home, as well as infrastructure, the facilities where we sort and prepare the materials to be sent back to commerce. Again, all of these components to the service, to recycling service, were largely subsidized by the revenue that was generated from the sale of these recycled materials. When China exited the, the world stage in terms of being a recycled commodities consumer, we saw a pretty stark decline in commodity, the rate for commodity revenue. Today, the blended rate for commodity revenues, because we're talking about all of the different materials we collect, paper recycling, and there's, there's different values associated, but the blended rate has dropped on average 80% since 2017, before the situation happened. So, this, this doesn't, this isn't a death knell for recycling. There's, there's still a lot of, a lot of good that, that can happen in terms of recycling. And Recology has been able to find new markets for our recycled, recycled material, new outlets for, for those materials, so they're still being put back into commerce. However, with 50% of the world's demand for recycled material exiting the stage, there's, there's been a supply and demand kind of imbalance. And consumers of recycled material are now saying, we want cleaner material. We want cleaner recyclables, which is really a good thing. They don't want, when they purchase recyclables from us, they don't want to pay for even small amounts of incidental garbage that, that's ending up with those recyclables. So, it's, that has trickled upstream, and Recology's responded in a couple of key ways to help, help continue making our material have a high demand on, on the world stage. So, as I mentioned, we've aggressively pursued new end markets for our materials, both domestically and overseas. We've enhanced our customer education and outreach. We recognize a really important part of all this is making sure consumers, businesses know how to recycle so they can participate effectively in, in the recycling program. We've also, at our recycling facility, slowed down production and added additional staff to help remove non-recyclable materials that end up at the recycling facility. And last but not least, we're exploring new technology, new infrastructure that we could put in place that would further help us clean up the recyclable materials and make sure we're, we're producing a really clean, high-valued product. So, in the face of this, this pretty devastating impact to the recycling industry, some communities have made the decision to discontinue their recycling programs. Some communities have decided to drastically cut back their recycling, which means that, that the material they were collecting as recyclable is ending up in the landfill. However, that, many communities, especially many communities in this region, have chosen to take a different approach. Still see the economic and environmental value in recycling, and so they're investing in it. Which is, which is why we're here tonight to ask for Council's support in, in our rate adjustment request. And what this looks like is, for residential customers, it would involve a rate increase of $1.35 per household per month. For commercial customers, it would be an increase of $2.25 per cubic yard of garbage service collected monthly. That, that rate adjustment would help align the, the existing rate structure to, to match with the true cost of service. It would help strengthen and, and make Des Moines' recycling program sustainable for the long term, as a funding source. It would also help support additional public education and outreach. Again, we recognize that's key to, to making our recycling program work. Residents and businesses have to be educated. They have to have the tools and, and knowledge to, to know how to participate. And, I'm sorry, the adjustment would also help increase the continued research and work that we've been doing, trying to focus on developing domestic markets locally. Ideally, we'd like to be able to recycle the products we're making, or the, the waste we're making here locally. The rate adjustment would be communicated in the Annual Service Guide we put on the website. And the way that this would appear to customers, it would be embedded into the garbage rate, so there won't be a separate line item. That's similar to the current rate structure, where the cost of recycling is included in the cost of garbage. However, we would, we'd be doing a mailing in November alongside the Annual Service Guide mailing, explaining what the, the rate increase is related to both these, these adjustments, as, and, as well as providing information and tips on how residents can, can participate better in the recycling program. And in closing, we've appreciated the opportunity to be the City of Des Moines' partner in sustainability over the past eight years. Over, over this time, our partnership has adapted to support the city's response to a range of, of challenges and opportunities, from cleaning up litter and illegal dumping in the community's neighborhoods, to developing a, a special recycling program, so residents can, can recycle their, their styrofoam at the curb. We look forward to continuing to partner with you and would be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
Yeah.
Councilmember Back?
So, on this rate adjustment, I see the commercial is going to be two and a quarter per cubic yard, but on the residential, it's just a flat $1.35. So, some residential garbage cans are 24, 30 gallons. Some are up to 60 gallons, I believe. So, it's one, it's a $1.35 per residential household regardless of the size of can they have?
Yep. Yes, that's correct. And, and the reason behind that is that most residential households have the 96-gallon recycle cart. They have, they're, they're receiving the same amount of recycling service. With commercial businesses, they can have up to, I believe it's up to 200% of their garbage service in, in recycling. But oftentimes, the amount of recycling service they're taking advantage of varies wildly, so we try to tie the, the rate increase to the actual amount of service that they're utilizing.
Okay. And then on the contamination monitoring and enforcement protocol, I call it the garbage police. What does that enforcement look like? Your garbage man sees something, and they just leave a generic note on the can? Do you send them a letter? Is there a threat of a fine if they don't clean up their garbage? You know, what, what does the enforcement look like, do you guys?
Absolutely. So, first of all, the contamination enforcement program would only apply to commercial and multifamily properties. It, it would not be, residential properties are not, not included in this. And it's, it's essentially kind of a three-strikes, education emphasis, emphasis program, where we have staff that go in advance of the truck. They go and they check. They open the lid. They do a visual inspection of the container. They take pictures for the purposes of, of educating. They create a report that says, your, your recycled container is, is not in compliance. Here's the issues that we're seeing. And again, it's three strikes. So, we would send that letter out to the customer, as well as call the customer to, to try to make connection that way. On the third strike, there would be a contamination fee of $25. And really, what that pays for is disposing of the non, it's, you know, essentially, if they've made it three strikes, that, that container's pretty full of garbage. It just paid, it covers the cost of paying for disposing of it as garbage. Again, it's, the emphasis is on education. It's not on to be punitive. But we've found that, that having, having the stick in the carrot gives us some additional incentive, gives customers some additional motivation to come into compliance.
So, I'm in the commercial maintenance business in service buildings, where we have issues with our dumpsters, with other people in the neighborhood that have already filled up their cans, so they decide to bring their garbage to ours. So, what if somebody else is contaminating a dumpster, and it's not that customer's fault? I mean, is it, do you just basically tell them, hey, you, it's, it's in your can. You're going to pay, you're going to pay this fine, whether it's generated by you or not? How, do you deal with that, or how would you cross that bridge?
Excuse me. What I would suggest is, we could put a locking mechanism on the container, and if you're, if you're having issues with neighbors, that solves that pretty quick.
No more questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Buckston?
So, for the consumers, just to clarify, $1.35 per household per month or $1.35 per can, if you have two recycling cans or three recycling cans, it's just per address? And then on the bill, you know, there's a line item for recycling that always says zero. And if the, this rate increase is because of the recycling issue, I'm just curious as to why the recycling line item is still going to remain zero, in that you put this fee into the general, what did you, you call it, non-disposable or disposable garbage?
So, that line item will be updated to say, recycling is included with garbage service. We worked with, we in the city worked with a consultant who, who developed the, the rate structure, and this was the, the model that they, they proposed. So, so we'll be doing a better job of, of utilizing that line. It's not free. It's included with the garbage service.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
Councilmember Netting?
Has there been any thought given to, maybe, given some concessions to, or incentives to businesses that choose to go to one-hundred percent compostable materials for their products? Let's just say, small businesses, or chains, like Jack in the Box, you know, Taco Time has gone to one-hundred percent compostable everything. Has there been any of that thought given to any of the rates?
So, the way, the way our rate structure is built initially is to actually incentivize that behavior. The most, the most expensive rate structure you can have is to have more garbage. So, Taco Time, for instance, who is like, is like best-in-class in terms of using compostable products, they have a cheaper rate by nature of the fact that they have a much smaller dumpster size. They still have, you know, the, the little mints and, and things like that, but they, they have a very small garbage dumpster size, and so that reduces their bill dramatically just, just by nature of the way the rates are structured.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beck?
I was going to make a motion, but do you?
I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the thoroughness of this effort. Laura has done a great job. Our staff has done a great job. I would say that Recology's been an excellent partner. It is unfortunate what's happening, you know, in our country, but I'm sure everywhere else in the world, where we rely on a minimum amount of, you know, other countries to assist us in, in some of the things that we probably could do better here in this country, which is, of course, waste reduction. So, I want to thank you. You've done a great job, and I look forward to the educational part as well.
I move to approve amendment number two to the Comprehensive Garbage Recyclables/Compostables Collection Agreement between the City of Des Moines and Recology Clean Scapes Incorporated, and to authorize the city manager to sign the amendment substantially in the form as submitted.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Beck, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven-zero. I'll go back to Councilmember Beck.
I move to exercise the option to extend the contract term to October 31st, 2022, and to direct staff to notify Recology of this extension.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Beck, seconded by Councilmember Banks. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven-zero. Thank you very much. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Michael, I'd like to introduce the next one?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The, the item that the city attorney will address in a moment has to do with the refunding and refinancing of SCORE bonds and amending the inter-local agreement that governS SCORE. We've had Devon, the executive director, came, came about earlier this month, gave us an update, as I said. I attended the SCORE board, where the budget was passed on Wednesday. That meeting, the state auditor proclaimed a clean bill of health on a number of aspects of the finances of SCORE. And the amendment to the ILA and the participation in the refinancing, few of us will remember that the city was unable to participate in the original bonds that created SCORE, because our bond rating was so low at that time, that it would have impacted the cost of the money if we had been included. So, we've had this sort of hybrid designation as the quote "host city." And the other cities are basically the owner cities. So, two huge changes that are occurring is that Federal Way is now withdrawing from SCORE, and our city received, you know, three-step bond upgrade last summer from standard impours to double A-plus, which is literally the highest designation you can get unless you go through a recession and your financial policies work. So, we are happy to stay at double A-plus and not go for the triple A. But, at any rate, Tim's going to talk about that, but SCORE has requested some changes to the ILA, and we think that the governance, those changes are appropriate, and that our status from host city to now owner city is also a step forward for us. So, with that, I'll introduce Tim.
Thank you. Tim George, city attorney. This agenda item tonight, it's on page 151. I don't have the motions on the board, but the motions are there at 151. This is a good, a good news item. SCORE is refunding the previous, the existing bonds by approving the ordinance tonight that will authorize the city of Des Moines to be involved in that. There's an anticipated savings of $500,000 a year to, to the SCORE cities, and that would work out to about $30,000 a year to the city of Des Moines. So, a part of that ordinance is the ILA, which is the document that allows all six cities now to, to join together to form this organization. And by approving the ordinance, you are also approving the ILA. Des Moines will be added as a member city, like the city manager just stated, which is a testament to the work that this council's done to get the finances in order. And additionally, the ILA removes Federal Way from the, from the group, so instead of seven cities, there will now be six cities. And additionally, there was one provision regarding voting on budgets. The updated ILA will allow the budget calculations for costs to each city to be decided by a supermajority rather than unanimously. There were some issues when Des Moines and other cities were trying to get a more sustainable budget at SCORE, that we weren't able to get all seven cities to agree. So, the supermajority will probably make that easier going forward. So, that's, that's basically the presentation. Devon provided most of it last week, so if there's any questions, otherwise, though.
First hand I had was Councilmember Netting, and then, do I have, I, I, there was kind of a tie between, then I'll go to Councilmember Mahoney and then Councilmember Beck.
I just have the motion. I move to suspend Rule 26A to enact draft ordinance number 19-060 on the first reading.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Netting, seconded by Councilmember Beck. I assume there's no discussion?
I have a question.
On the motion?
No.
Okay. We will discuss this further.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the motion to suspend Rule 26A, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven-zero. Go back to Councilmember Netting.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 19-060, authorizing the refunding and refinancing of SCORE capital bonds, and approving amendments to the ILA, the inter-local agreement, to include Des Moines as a member city.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Beck. Discussion, I believe, I'm going to go with Councilmember Mahoney, and then Beck and Netting.
So, I just had a couple of questions. With six members, a supermajority is five or four? Five. And the other, the other one is, all the owner percentages looked right, but Burien was less than us. Is it because of their partnership with King County, or they're 4.82%, where we're 6.02? You know, based on, like, populations and things like that, that just seemed low to me for being a owner city. And I just didn't know, understand the reasoning for that.
Yeah, so these percentages were calculated using the, it's not population, but it's inmate population. So, I, I don't know why their inmate population is so low. It may be something with their corridor, their police department, but that's how it was calculated.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, and then I sent, Councilmember Beck, oh, Councilmember Banks?
Just a comment. I do like this supermajority language in there compared to where we came from. When Federal Way was in there, what we had was three strong mayor, excuse me, four strong mayor cities and three council-manager cities. And the strong mayors were pretty strong. And it was also interesting that in the admin board, the chair that was chosen every year was always one of the strong mayor cities, never a council-manager city. So, I think this is a lot more equitable, and I just think in future decision-making, having this supermajority clause, with the fact that now we've got three strong mayor cities and three council-manager cities, I think this is going to be more fair for Sea-Tac, Burien, and Des Moines. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and I'll go to Councilmember Netting, then Councilmember Banks. I just want to remind everybody, our consultants have a hard stop, so please keep your comments to as sharp an edge as you can. Councilmember Netting? Or did you, oh, Councilmember Banks, okay.
Thank you. So, can you just speak briefly, because I'm sure a lot of people don't understand the exiting of Federal Way, and if there's an impact to the other cities related to the costs?
Yeah. So, Federal Way just felt that, based on cost to them, that it would be more advantageous to withdraw from SCORE, which they did. That was coupled with a change in leadership. You know, you have to remember that when this started earlier in the year, working through these issues, we were on the hook for about $870,000. And because of the work, you know, Beth Ann was involved, the chief, Tim, myself, working through these issues with SCORE, working through with consultants, trying to find a financial model, working with the legislature to increase the Department of Corrections participation, refinancing the bonds, which now is going to save, there was about fifty, about $80 million in bonds. Federal Way is now repaying their $21 million, so refinancing about $57 million of debt. Half a million dollars was saved, because the cost of money is lessened, because, you know, the average bond rating of the cities is stronger with, in, with our participation as well. So, there were a number of factors that was very difficult to work through, but, but, so the, the financial implications of Federal Way withdrawing are marginal as opposed to dire, and that just resulted in looking at the financing of SCORE, both the expenditure and the revenue side in a different light. So, the answer is, there won't be nearly as much impact as we thought.
Thank you.
Councilmember Banks? Or, I'm just netting, I'm sorry.
I'm just glad I let Councilmember Banks go first, because Michael just answered everything I was going to praise staff for. So, thanks, staff, and thank you, Michael, for heading that up, and I look forward to SCORE and, and staff coming up with other ways to decrease the amount that Des Moines pays in, and, and further researching the way we can do that. So, I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Okay. With that, under motion number two, all those in favor? Okay, I'll give you, I don't see all the green lights, everybody got them? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven-zero. Motion passes. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, acceptance of Washington Traffic Safety Commission grant, Des Moines Municipal Court DUI court. Item four, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Item five, Des Moines Creek Basin Habitat Restoration Monitoring, Consultant On-Call Agreement Task Assignment for Engineering Services. Item six, Draft Ordinance Number 19-081, Prostitution Vehicle Impound Ordinance. Item seven, King County Youth and Amateur Sports Grant Acceptance. Item eight, Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Youth Athletic Facilities Grant Acceptance. And item nine, Interagency Agreement Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, JAG, Program JAG Grant Award Number 2107-DJ-BX-0496. And that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor?
Councilmember Netting?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Netting, seconded by Councilmember Banks. At this time, is there any item that a council member wishes to remove? Okay, seeing none? Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven-zero. I will now read the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation summary into the record. The Des Moines City Council wishes to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourages the community to ensure that victims of domestic violence know that they are not alone and are here to, and are here to support, we are here to support the survivors of domestic violence as they courageously move forward to enjoy full and healthy lives. Signed, this 26th day of September, 2019. Council, at this time, we're going to be bringing in our consultants. They are, they do have a hard stop. We need to be very mindful, plus we have an executive session after this. However, we have a number of new boards out there with a lot of the current thinking, and so I'm going to say five minutes, because that means we'll be, we'll be recessed for ten, but to give time for the council to take a look at the boards and so forth before we come back. Michael, you have a comment?
I'd just like to add that the bullet points, these are the boards that were used at the community redevelopment meeting. And so, these are the boards that were, you know, addressed by the 200 or so people that were there, and indicating preferences and design features. So, that's what we want you to see before we start our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. We are recessed at this time. We have a quorum, we'll continue, she'll be here momentarily. Here she comes, see, just like I said.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on with this focus on the marina right now. You know, a couple of people are here, I'd like to introduce Michelle Wardin as the CEO of Outdoor Research and one of the tenants in the business park, maybe a tenant elsewhere as well at some point. But we're happy to have Michelle here and Roger, I know the finance person for Outdoor Research, I'm sorry, director?
CEO.
Okay, great, perfect. And so we want to move forward in this, tonight, we're going to try to go relatively quickly. But what we have is a series of presentations. We're going to start with Mark Bunzel, who's been working with us on looking at what the future of the marina could be itself on the water side. And then we're going to move into basically somewhat of a repetition of the meeting that we had last week. And then Susan's going to provide a summary of the boards, the input from the community. Then we're going to ask Robert and Adam to talk about kind of where we are in the process. And then we'll be, there'll be next steps related to, and a request for council action. So with that, I'm going to introduce Mark, if you'd go forward and do your presentation.
Great, thank you very much, Michael. I'm Mark Bunzel, I'm the principal of the Wagner Group, and I want to introduce Leonard Landon, Lorena Landon, who participated in authoring this, and behind me is Brian Pemberton, who will be working with us on the next group. Just a quick thing on my background, when we say Wagner, we produce, the three of us do a 500-page book that covers every marina and anchorage locations between Olympia and Ketchikan, Alaska. So we, that's about 400, we personally visit about 275 of them. We know what works and what doesn't work. Leonard comes out of a corporate background, owning a data services company in Kirkland. I come out of PricewaterhouseCoopers, Intel Corporation, and also a corporate background before I pursued a fortune in the boating industry. I still have not found that. Anyway, so that's the Wagner Cruising Guide. Our book goes out to 7,000 people every year and tells people where to take their boats. And so we know a lot about destinations and what works and what doesn't work. We've seen mistakes, we've seen strengths, and that's where we're coming from. So I'll skip that, that's just very quickly what we do. That is the Wagner Guide for 2019 and some of the other businesses we're in. And I'm going to talk about the challenges and opportunities here in Des Moines. So that's a little bit about us. First of all, to understand the market, it's not a million unit market, it's not 100,000 boats. It's 36,000 boats, according to the consultancy firm Grant Thornton, and that's in the northwest and inside passage area, including Washington and British Columbia and southeast Alaska. So about one-third of those, or 12,000, are serious cruising boats that go out every summer and cruise between two and 12 weeks. So it's not 100,000. So we want to scale, give you an idea of the scale. But all of these people are looking for places to go. They're looking for neat places that they can visit, and when they get there, they can spend between $300 to $500 per day or more at a destination on moorage, on restaurant experiences, fuel, maintenance. Many of you know that Des Moines is well-known as one of the attractive and least expensive places to buy fuel. And it's been a terrific draw for the marina. They may buy new electronics, provisions and liquor, tours, attractions, and fishing charters. Very vibrant area. Now, they're expecting to find resort-level destination facilities. Now, the basics are clean washrooms, clean bathrooms. We get complaints if we write up bathrooms and somebody goes to one and says, "It was awful." And they call us. And we actually will tell people when we're getting complaints. They're more than just a place to park a boat. And some marinas are still places for, to park a boat, but the more popular ones, the more successful ones, are a destination. They have amenities like resorts. And this is starting to shift, and more and more are starting to do that. And guess what? They're willing to pay the price. We have been encouraging marinas to begin raising their prices, because many marinas are like your marina, they're either breaking even, or they're close to breaking even, or as Scott liked to say, you know, "We're breaking even, but we're probably going bankrupt over the long run, because we're not putting enough money away to rebuild the marina." And this is not just a challenge in Des Moines, this is a challenge up and down the coast. And everybody's marinas are all having these problems of an old, decaying marina that needs to be refreshed and in some cases rebuilt. Tenant boaters want a safe, secure, convenient place to house their boat and not out cruising. When we have done our consulting work with various marinas, we have sometimes walked in and talked about security of the restrooms. One of the marinas had showers, Lorena pointed this out, on the women's side of the bathrooms. If you, the women wouldn't use the showers because you couldn't lock them. Well, I never saw that, because I didn't go into the women's room, luckily Lorena did. But that particular marina now put locks on the inside of the shower doors. A very simple fix, solve that problem, and those are the kinds of things we look for. So what are the opportunities for the city of Des Moines? Your marina is a tremendous economic generator for moorage and other services. And the other services are the future opportunity. There's more of an opportunity to be commercially oriented with marine-related businesses down in the marina area. And some of you have been down to the marina, see that one dock is now dedicated to one of your neighbors right up the hill on the highway, and that's Ranger tug in Cotwater. And they've gone ahead and leased between 300 and 350 feet, and it's added a vibrancy. People are coming down, new customers, they're happy, they're thrilled. And so that's something we're very pleased to have been a part of. It's also already a popular amenity with the access to the water for people to enjoy to go fishing, participate in water sports like kayak and boating. I came down on a Sunday afternoon, and quite frankly, I was shocked, and this was off-season last spring. And I couldn't believe how many people, residents and visitors, were walking along, I'll call it the promenade, that's a grand term for it, but that's where we should go with it. And those people are coming down and also spending money. So it's creating that destination. Beach Park was a surprise, I've been coming to your marina here for years, I never walked that far. I didn't know about Beach Park. And now we're negotiating separately from all of this to actually open up a school for Ranger tug owners in the Beach Park that will be offered about four, five times a year. So your other benefits, you're located very close to Sea-Tac Airport, you have an opportunity to be a fly-in marina. Now, the lack of moorage space right now is a problem, but there are, there is a trend where people are buying boats who live in other areas of the country and leaving their boat in the northwest. It becomes their weekend cabin or their vacation cabin. And that's happening with all the marinas. It's a real challenge here, because there's up to a 12-year waitlist for many of your slips. And by the way, I look at a 12-year waitlist as an opportunity, because that to me tells me, due to supply and demand, there is an opportunity to raise prices. I always hesitate to say raise prices, but you've got a great product, you should be proud of what it is and charge what it's worth, and I'm here to tell you, you're not. And that was based upon our doing an analysis of your neighboring marinas, you've got more upward growth to go. So when we talk about some of these plans about the marina, it's, we are going to be doing the hard economic work to say, what does that revenue look like? And even take a hard projection on the next phase of the project to look at it over a 20-year period in five-year increments and recommend that the city look at those five years and refresh that. Use that template and refresh it. We think the Marina Uplands can be better utilized, you'll hear more about that tonight, to form that link to the Marina District. And we've talked about Ranger tug in Cotwater. We have been recommending to them that they open up a delivery center here, and we're even looking to see how we can capture some of that taxable retail sales. That could be revenue directly into the city's general fund. All right? That, and by the way, all those other amenities and so forth, is money into the general fund. So some of the challenges, the marina infrastructure, you've heard, seawall, docks, electrical systems need a plan for replacement. We're not talking 10 million, we could be talking 20 million or more, we don't know yet. And part of our next phase is to actually get some preliminary numbers so that we understand the scope of that. The mix and configuration of the docks need to be reset to meet the different needs for the market. Larger slips, we're recommending to marinas that it's not just larger slips. We've got these Ranger tugs coming in, selling 200 boats a year at the Seattle Boat Show. That's a huge influx of boats, all looking for marina storage space. Many of them reside on trailers, but when they're out traveling, they're looking for places to go. Some of the Upland Marina supported amenities need to be rebuilt, you know, I think you all know this, bathrooms, no laundry, some of the storage areas. Again, take this jewel in the rough that you have, and let's put, give it what it really needs. And go through the design work to do that, and take this asset and polish it and leverage it. Development opportunities to improve the main floor are going to add, as I said, to the taxable retail sales. So the challenge, how to pay for millions in investment renovation. Mortgage fees, we've talked about, coverage mores are very expensive, and during a community meeting, I started to drop, "We may not be able to afford covered mortgage." The covered mortgage is not carrying its weight. When we come up with the pricing for replacing the covered mortgage, a number of people are going to be shocked. I believe it's priced itself out of the market, you'd have to be charging, I think, at least 50% to 75% more. And we will come up with the numbers that carry that, whether that's a true statement or not. Because the community, if we're going to take something away, they want to know why. And by the way, when we had the community meeting, one of the things that we told them is, you've got, I believe, 22% of the marina tenants are Des Moines residents. The rest of them are subsidizing other people from other areas. So this is beyond just an amenity for the community. So part of our thing is to develop a reasonable plan that makes sense and work with the community, the tenants, and the visitors' market to understand it, to communicate it to you, and to communicate the potential. And no starry eyes on this, this is going to be a bottom line, what could that be? Develop that responsible plan, work out a schedule for the redevelopment. The challenge with marina redevelopment is you can't go in and pull out all the docks and then put new docks in. It has to be done progressively. That can work financially very well, because you're spreading out the payments, but there's a price for that, rather than getting it done in one fell swoop. It just can't be done in one fell swoop. It'll probably be done over a five-year or more period. Okay? So that's scheduled. And by the way, the revenues are going to be changing during that, and that's why we're recommending a rolling five-year projection and trying to look out 20 years, knowing our accuracy is going to diminish as we go out over that 20 years. But we can at least say, where are we trying to go? And we hope to have a bump in that revenue when the marina floor is developed out and we truly become a desirable destination location. Okay. So what we're planning to do for you in our Phase Two is draft plan for the renovation and rebuild, plan to renovate and develop the foreshore, a look at future revenue, cost and investment models of how that can be done, multi-stage plan, look at different business models. One of the models that we'll be looking at for you through an RFP process with probably three companies will be a public-private partnership. You have something very desirable, and there are companies that will come in and fund that redevelopment. The difference will change the rate, the lease rate, and we'll be able to hopefully come up with some projected numbers and look at the RFP. And you can then make the decision in terms of whether you want to take this on yourself or want to work with a very knowledgeable, talented third party. One of them gave me the anecdote the other day that they believe their firm can build, rebuild your marina for 30% less than it would cost the city of Des Moines. So we owe it to you to give you those numbers, and it's part of our plan to do that. So our objective is to come back with a number of options and what the financial projections are against those options. Okay, so we're going to be gathering information from tenants, the community, city, we've had one meeting with the community already, and we'll continue to do that. I think that's the style of transparency that the city of Des Moines really wants to perform to, and we understand that, and we've built that into our plan. After we do this extensive budget model behind the projected plans, it'll be reported back to city council and staff. You can imagine there's going to be a fair number of vigorous meetings with staff about that. And then we've budgeted for the time to communicate the results to the community. I joke about it as my Kevlar vest stage. And in the first community meeting, we did get a little taste of it, and we dealt with it. And as you might imagine, we even got questions, "Well, what happened to the reserves from eight, nine years ago? Where did they go?" So we left that to Michael. But those are the things that people want to know, what happened to the money? And the answer is very simple, if the community, if the city did not tap into that resource, we might not be sitting here tonight. Okay, so that is a quick version, I normally don't talk this quickly, but I wanted to give you some insight there, what we're doing.
Great, thank you very much, Mark, appreciate that. And council, I think we'll try to get through these presentations, then we'll have And council, I think we'll try to get through these presentations, and then we'll have, if there are questions, kind of hold them toward the end. And if you could pass over the, please, not the mic, no, I need the...
The clicker.
The clicker. Thanks, yeah, Bonnie. Thank you, so what we're going to do now is just do a brief summary of what we talked about at the Marina Community Redevelopment Meeting. We were able to have three of our council members there, the other four had conflicts that night, a lot of events occurring right now. But we had, the yacht club hosted it, we had the mayor, we had council member Nutting, our chair of the Economic Development Committee, myself, and then Skylab did their presentation. So, what we did was a PowerPoint presentation, and we provided an opportunity for the community to give us input on design features, preferred design features. So, quickly, you know, there's a lot going on currently. I think you hear Mark talking about Ranger tugs and expanding their presence potentially. So, just some of the things that are currently happening in the marina. The Wasson House has been taken down, that's absolutely beautiful connectivity between the marina and the Beach Park. Van Gasken, we were able to purchase. Once again, it was $1.2 million, and between grants, we were able to come up with about $900,000, so it cost the city less than $300,000 to get that property. And kind of looking at what the disposition of that property is going to be right now. This is an op, you know, one option that was prepared, looking at Overlook Two, closing Fifth Avenue north of the driveway that provides access out to Cliff. Conceptual Ranger tugs and Cutwater boats, as Mark described. On the Quarter Deck Open, Container Cafe, they've been very successful, great place to go have a beer and watch the sunset. Tag Zone Property is, you know, was purchased, and this is the really critical piece of real estate at Sixth and 223rd on the southeast quadrant. And that's going to be right in the development pattern going forward. The alley, we're undergrounding utilities, PSE is actually doing that, the alleyway behind the theater. We plan on extending that all the way down from 223rd to 227th and making that a significant walkable venue and activate that alleyway. Des Moines Theater, once again, they're under construction. They've done a lot to change the footings to accommodate what they intend to do with the theater. And so they're working on it, and you can see the rendering in the corner there. Marina Sculpture Garden in the south end of the marina, just opened, we're planning on expanding that, providing, you know, a public amenity. Beautification Planters in the downtown, that's along Wasson, and also in the downtown, these were very successful, very well received by the community. So, quickly, how we got here, we've had two Port of Seattle Economic Development Grants, and we matched those with city funds. We were fortunate enough to have Robert lead those efforts with his team, Adams here. And the Phase One was looked at, marina feasibility, and did a market analysis. The Phase Two, we did a Des Moines Marina Financial Feasibility Study to start to determine orders of magnitude of cost for the marina steps, which we did. And both of these were presented to council, including community meetings associated with these phases. We're going to share our Phase Three Economic Development Grant products that are still in process. We have a separate contract or on-call contract with Skylab. And so what we're trying to do is get to the point where we can have the conceptuals and renderings and an understanding of the dynamics, so we can issue a request for qualifications for marina redevelopment. And we have Mark here tonight. Common link between Robert's work and Mark's work, as you saw Mark highlight, was achieving a viable regional destination. And destination, I think, has both national and international implications in addition to just regional. So, Phase One, we explored potential public amenities, started looking at a marina steps, connectivity to the, from the marina to the downtown, had different renderings, once again, looking for a green roof on a building, looking at ways to enhance sustainability. October 2017, we had a community meeting on a donated Argosy boat. Highest preferences were all-weather market facility, casual dining, brew pub, boutique hotel, food and retail, and also associated with the marina steps are retail, brew pub, wine bar restaurants. Lessons we've learned, and a lot of this we've learned from Robert, and we appreciate that. But the value of public investment in infrastructure, and that assists in defining the development pattern of private investment. Great example is what Mark just said about extending the promenade, which we'll do as part of the bulkhead replacement, all the way through the north parking lot, connecting it to the Beach Park. So you've got a very nice walking venue. Establishing public space is absolutely critical for the public to own the space, especially, for example, the promenade, once again, on a summer day that's filled with people, that literally they own that. The need to integrate the landside redevelopment, the waterside improvements. Tonight, you see the result of those efforts, emphasizing walkability, environmental characteristics, recreational access and opportunity. And by the community identifying preferences, that begins to show us what the demand function will be for certain uses in the marina. And also, one of the things that we, you know, have now that we've not had in the past was the active business park with about a 4,000-person employment base, the multimodal transportation option from the Anglic Station down to the marina and back, we just instituted last Saturday, went to full midday service, so the shuttle now runs from seven in the morning, seven at night, and transports demand to the marina. Phase Two, we focused on financial feasibility, order of magnitude for the steps, somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.5 to $4 million. And we will look for opportunities to partner with private developer to construct the marina steps. So now, we wanted to ask the community, and what we did last week was to identify preferred design features, and the next step will be developer request for qualifications. So, I'm going to introduce Skylabs. As you look at this, council, and as we told the community last week, please remember the renderings you see are conceptual designs. These are, which are to give you visual examples of possibilities, building footprints have not yet been established. So with that, I turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Jeff Covell from Skylab Architecture, and happy to be here tonight, again, sharing this work. It's a really exciting opportunity here, and we've been working on it for, I think, over a year now. And I think we're really on to something compelling. I'm going to try to go a lot quicker through this tonight, so feel free to stop me if I miss something important. But, you know, for us, the area that we're looking at... Sorry, does this have a pointer? The area for us, it really started with the heart of the steps here, but for us, it's really looking at sort of the master plan and vision and the potential of the whole area. You'll see, our thinking has sort of expanded beyond just the steps and really trying to make sure we're laying the groundwork for a full realization of the potential of the site and not what might be just the Phase One kind of field of view. For us, it's important to look at this from these three perspectives. One being urban design, the place that we're creating, its role in the community. The second being the landscape and how that landscape serves the community. And the third being the architecture itself, I'll drill down into these in the next slides. From a landscape piece, we've been working with a firm called Place, which is a Seattle and Portland-based firm, a very creative group, that we're doing a large project at Nike headquarters with them right now. We've developed a really great working relationship, and Ignacio would like to be here. He presented with me at the community meeting. But I'll do the best I can to present his scope here. But for the landscape, really looking at the big picture, what's happening sort of regionally? What's the ecological approach and opportunity here? From a stormwater management point of view, what are best practices and what are the opportunities? And then really looking to strengthen the native ecosystem. When we started studying this, from this perspective, what we realized was that there's this great sort of creek infrastructure in the city. And, you know, generally, the stormwater management, you know, in varying degrees of complexity, utilizes these creeks to deliver the water to the sound. And, you know, the cleaner the water is before it hits the creeks, generally, the better. But if there isn't appropriate cleaning before it does, there also is some benefit, I guess, to the bay that the water is traveling down through these networks. And one of the things we found was that one large area where this infrastructure is not in place is immediately uphill from the site of the steps. And this is one of the only, maybe the only zone where a large concrete culvert essentially delivers the stormwater to the bay unfiltered. So we saw that as a great opportunity to sort of expand the field of view of this project and bring more meaning to the project. You know, the consequences of having the untreated runoff, decline of marine ecosystems, soil and water pollution, uncontrolled algae blooming, erosion, you know, essentially loss of habitat. And so what is currently maybe not best practices, we are seeing as a primary opportunity, and really, we asked the question, could we turn 223rd Street into an urban creek? And, you know, over the last 10 to 20 years, there's been an incredible amount of innovation around stormwater management in urban areas and leveraging natural systems and, you know, less mechanized and more natural approach to these. And you're seeing that, you know, through planters, through a lot of sort of... This is actually a natural water treatment plant, but where you're seeing this more commonly is in sort of street planters and people disconnecting their gutters directly from the storm drains and whatnot. But here, if we took that whole 60 acres, essentially, there's a footprint associated with treating that area. And this would be using like a bio-swell or some type of facility like that. And if you take that whole footprint and you just look at the marina itself, you could reasonably accommodate that in this zone, we feel. And, you know, beyond that, we really feel like the project will hopefully extend all the way up 223rd to Marine View Drive, and that, you know, a significant amount of this could happen there. So, moving on from that ecological opportunity, and I guess, and I didn't really mention, but just, you know, from our point of view, people love nature a lot more than they like concrete. And, you know, what a great way to sort of bring a vitality and a connectivity from downtown to the marina by enhancing the natural system. From an urban design point of view, you know, we start talking a lot about, it's like, what's the payoff when you get there? Is this a destination? Is there flexible space that, at the bottom of the steps or on the marina floor, that can really become a center and hub for a community in a really flexible format? So maybe there's a central public space, maybe that is associated or connected with the farmer's market and finding a permanent home for that. Accessing the urban area through an integrated approach, meaning like finding as many ways for people to walk down to this area and, you know, really leveraging the current accessible routes, but, you know, obviously creating this new one through the stair. Access to the water, universal accessibility, this is really key. It's about a 35-foot drop from where the stairs are. And so a lot of our study has been, how do we bring accessibility to that in a way that is sustainable operationally for the city? And then really, you know, creating a place, creating a really desirable place for people to want to go. So one of the things we looked at is just the walkability. And, you know, this is really actually elegant diagram, and you can see with a five-minute, within a five-minute radius, walking, you know, essentially, most of the downtown core is covered. 10 minutes and, you know, the next layer of sort of housing, in 15 minutes, and you're really covering the, you know, large portion of the city. And so, we feel like it's not unreasonable that this marina floor can become a really strong, walkable plaza and destination for the city. And so how would that work? What we'd be doing is sort of capturing the stormwater, focusing it down this revitalized sort of right-of-way development on 223rd. We'd be filtering the water along the way, something similar to the success that you've had with the basket planting program, you know, bringing a really nice landscape connection on the cross-axis to Marine View Drive, and, you know, really enhance that intersection and draw people down, celebrate that stormwater at the stairs, land people into a public plaza, and then ultimately, to the water's edge. So, how could that look and feel? These are just some examples of other communities and how they've integrated stormwater into things like parking, parking lots, pedestrian ways, using cisterns to collect the water. And then, could that be incorporated into the stair design, into an active water feature? That, you know, could be maybe part stormwater and part, part not stormwater, you know, that could become a real community sort of amenity and destination. And then that could culminate into, into a plaza. And this is something that a lot of communities are doing very successfully, where they have the plaza space that has sort of a seasonal fountain integration. So maybe in the really hot months in the summer, this becomes a play, a play feature for the community. But turn off the water, and it's a great site to have an event. The stairs themselves could become amphitheater seating for this type of space. The farmer's market could flex into the space, there's a lot of great potential. So, how could that work with a little bit more detail? This is looking at the existing condition down 223rd. It's a little bit haphazard right now, some places there's perpendicular parking, some places there's diagonal parking. This is the type of thing where we would be recommending, where there's a stormwater planter strip, maybe walkways, parking, a new sidewalk. This would incorporate new lighting, things like that. And really sort of almost brand the marina and brand it all the way up into the town and really strengthen that experience. The more dense the parking is, the more, the less landscape there is. So that's just something I think we have to work through, which areas get which type of approach. One of, some of the areas of concern, I think, are the speed that people drive on this corner and trying to find a way to sort of slow down traffic and make sure that's a safe place. Overlook Park, you'll see in a moment, our plans are really looking to enhance Overlook Park. So, you know, does this become a place where there's enough parking where people can park there and then actually walk down the steps and ramps potentially? And then from an architecture point of view, I think the key aspect here is, what we're really trying to do is create a vision that attracts, creates excitement and attracts development partners, right? So, as Michael said, we're drawing some things, this may be relevant, it may end up someplace very different. I think the key, the themes are probably the more important pieces. And one of the themes is that the buildings are utilized, or the adjacency of the steps in the buildings are utilized so that each level of the adjacent buildings can become accessible to the steps. And that, we think, can just be a great way to sort of bring vitality to the steps, potentially bring things like cafe to the steps, a brewery, some other amenity. Depending on what the buildings are used for, they could open up onto the steps. So, bringing it... So bringing a diverse program is key, phasing the development so that we can start and build momentum over time. And then really create that iconic kind of holistic identity that really attracts people. So from a phasing point of view, this is actually new work we did post-community meeting because we felt like one of the things out of that meeting was that we were sort of giving the grand vision, but it wasn't broken down into sort of like bite-sized pieces. And we wanted to assess, how would we really see this happening? And then what are some of the potential impacts, like to parking, for example? So existing conditions, the primary site is this area that's essentially fenced off and being used for boat storage now. Overlook Park, as we mentioned, 223rd. And then there's some great opportunities on the expanded site. So Phase 1, and this really could be part of the steps, but we thought if we're really serious about the stormwater piece, we need to probably address that in the early phase. That could be something that even happens in advance of the steps to Overlook Park. Essentially, no parking impact there, potentially. We have to study more closely what happens on 223rd. And then Phase 2, or Phase 1B, would be the stair connector itself. One of the things that, in our previous work, we had some schemes that had an elevator and some schemes that didn't, where the elevator was in the adjacent building. We actually had early on looked at this idea of ramping and thought it was going to take up too much real estate. And then as we revisited this idea, we found a really strong way to essentially integrate ramps and create this long kind of journey, promenade down to the water itself. So you come to Overlook Park and you take the first section of ramp, you land on a plaza, second section of ramp, plaza, third section, and so on. And then there's a sort of shortcut, which is the steps themselves with the water feature on them. One of the other things we've been looking at is just, I think initially, we thought it was maybe a given that the roadway kept its current orientation. I think understanding that more over time, there's really not a strong reason to do that. And we think if the steps, the closer the steps land to the water, the better, just in terms of creating that vibrancy and the connectivity with the marina work. So this, sorry, just to go back. So essentially, here, there's sort of some trade-offs for parking happening, but essentially, this plan was gaining in parking. The next step here is developing this plaza at the foot of the steps that connects to the marina. This is a transit parking zone now, it could stay. It is an opportunity if we can offset the parking. One of the things that we've been looking at is strengthening the connection to the south, which would take some pressure off the north and balance out the equation a bit. So we have a new roundabout and potential parking areas south of the Harbor Master House. And then by doing that, we could potentially gain some flexible public park space down by the water. There's been a lot of discussion around the Harbor Master House itself and potentially repurposing it as maybe a restaurant. We've been talking about, could you add onto it and build a kitchen and enhance marina services onto it? Or do you build a second building for those services? I think they're all worth studying. In this scheme, essentially, we traded 79 spaces for 91 new spaces and we're showing 12 more spaces. Probably the big difference here is that the storage sheds are removed in this. We were having some interesting discussion today also about potentially going to a vertical storage solution, which is quite interesting, and where that could be located and how we could actually grow that and clear some land in the process and grow the density. And then last, I think almost lastly here, the building itself. You know, this is one version where there's two parcels. There's a northern parcel, which is the larger parcel. This is about a 25,000 square foot site. There is somewhere between three and four levels, depending on if you dig down for parking. So it's a potential of somewhere in the neighborhood of 75,000 to 100,000 square feet of developable space. We're also showing a building on the southern side of the steps and ramps. In this orientation, this is about a 10,000 square foot site, but there is the opportunity to grow that in different directions as well as that gets developed. One of the really neat things about that is as you're walking down the ramps and taking that journey, there's a great opportunity to sort of connect with whatever that uses for that site. And then, I think parking will be just an ongoing discussion, but there is an opportunity to build the steps essentially over an underground parking link between both parcels. This would be sort of if one developer took on the whole project in one phase. And there is the potential for approximately 150 spaces of parking there if the economics were to work, but that's going to be the struggle. The inspiration for these schemes, have been looking at some of the successful developments in Seattle. The Pike Place expansion is a particularly inspiring approach where there's a really strong integration of ramps, steps, retail space, overlook space, really enhancing that area. That's really analogous to the opportunity here. And then the two different versions that we've been focusing on, one is the sort of idea of the tides and tide pools, and this is more of a courtyard-type building, at least for the larger parcel, parcel A. Essentially, there's a light well in the building because the building is built in against the hill. And so in order to maximize the developable space, we need to bring light into the floor plate, it's just too deep otherwise. This scheme also has some more, what I would call, sort of integrated space on the south end, where the space feels like it's more carved into the ramps themselves. One of the storage sheds is sort of being repurposed as a covered farmer's market. And that piece has some infrastructure needs. In this variant, we were looking at pushing some of the plaza elements closer to the water itself. Here, the landings actually go onto the building and there's accessibility to each level of the building. And this is a really, really preliminary idea of what that vision could look like and how that building could integrate with the steps. One of the neat things here is the Overlook Plaza, you can walk across a bridge essentially onto the roof of this building, and then the ramp kind of comes down and underneath that, and you can see the water feature here. But this could be developed as the public elevator link for certain hours where there was just a dedicated elevator and lobby and potentially rooftop amenity, restaurant bar, that type of thing. This building, we've been looking at as an office building or hotel or some combination and just some other rough massings. The second concept here was this idea of taking inspiration from the existing pier and what if there could be a second pier that was sort of the next tier up that was essentially developed off of the city level? And could we make a building that was sort of inspired by that? So here, the building sort of extends out as a pier. You'll see, you can kind of see it mimics the docks in their orientation, but it sets up a really brilliant kind of destination and overlook where you can then see the actual pier. And potentially by breaking this building into two bars with the space in the middle, you pick up more daylight and take advantage of the hill. And then this version, there's more of a pavilion, a second building, and then more of a centralized plaza. And this is a preliminary visualization of what that could look like. And one of the neat things you can see here is, this is actual drone footage from the site where you can see how this pier and the actual pier start to work together and really just create a great connectivity to the water. And that's essentially where we're at. These were developed with a series of images that were really meant to be just sort of a matrix of options that we could get public response to. And a lot of these components are interchangeable.
Thanks, Jeff. Well, as Susan, having presented that in a slightly different form at the community meeting, the community then identified their design feature preferences. And so Susan's going to walk through what the outcome of that exercise was.
Thank you. Susan Caesar, the city's chief strategic officer. And I have kind of a summary of what the community told us. First, the process, we had boards around the room and a number of our consultants were there to answer questions about what people were looking at. We first started at kind of where do people live? This gives you an idea that we did definitely have a lot of folks who were closer to the marina, but pretty much a lot of, most everyone, except for this person up here, were within a walking radius. So that was kind of an interesting thing. There were some common themes that, as we looked at the boards, we gave each person six dots and they got to identify the features that they liked the most. And the common theme, we had the most dots or the most preferences for the accessible ramp design. I think by far, that was the highest preferred feature. It was somewhere in the area of 42, I think, dots were placed on the ramp design. They also chose walking areas of all types, the promenade, any place you could walk. They also chose gathering spaces, both the covered and uncovered seating areas, the open park space, water feature, any place that was kind of a gathering spot. They also really liked the rooftop amenities in both versions. So being able to go out on the edge and maybe it's a restaurant or being able to walk out on a green roof. They really liked the natural landscaping. A lot of dots were placed on that type of landscaping. They also really liked the integrated stormwater treatment. A lot of dots were placed along the 223rd concept of the Green Street, as well as bringing that into the marina itself. And they liked the all-weather farmer's market facility. So on the two different options, these are kind of what people liked the most out of those two options. Again, they liked the accessible ramp design the most. This option, they loved the boardwalk, which was kind of, I mean, it's similar to our, oops, wrong way, similar to our existing promenade extended, you know. They also liked the rooftop promenade and they liked the Water's Edge Park, the all-weather market facility, again, got a lot of dots, seating areas, kind of continuing the theme of the natural landscaping, the grass, sedge, water treatment, and they liked the play space in this version. The pier, again, they liked the ramp design, the central plaza, rooftop amenities, ground floor amenities, so any place where you could gather and have seating, dining, or retail. They liked the integrated amphitheater and the covered terrace. And then we also provided them with sticky notes and they could write individual comments. And these are not all the comments individually, these are kind of a summary of what people said. And they really liked that concept of the urban creek and stormwater treatment. They felt that traffic and parking will need to be addressed both within the development and on Cliff Avenue. Some concerns were expressed about views and that they should be protected for folks that live adjacent to the marina. There was a comment about a full walking loop and to accommodate pedestrians throughout the development. Farmer's Market needing a permanent structure, commercial kitchen and parking. Comments about the hotel were both, it's great and not a good idea. So we're really probably equal on both sides of that one. Accommodate the marina tenants' needs in the redevelopment, a desire for play area for children, and talking about the position of the sun so that the stairs would receive sun in the summer for use during the summer. Some people, there is at least one comment that said that we prefer the tides concept. And actually, the tides concept did get more dots overall for the features. Some concerns were about crime and activity at night. Rooftop restaurant was a great idea. One question about whether we need more retail space since we already have some vacancies. They felt overall that the conceptual drawings were very impressive. And one person thought that rather than the ramp, we should build more occupiable space in the ramp area. But that was kind of a minority opinion, a lot of people really liked the ramp design. And that's it.
Thank you, Susan. I think one thing that, I just mentioned the mayor, that was interesting was when we went through the first slide deck talking about lessons we've learned, public space and public infrastructure, and then you see the response of the community to the things they value, and they're all about public space and public infrastructure. And so sustainability and being concerned about the environment. So there are a number of common themes that kind of run through this. But now it's a pleasure to ask Adam and Robert to bring up their slide deck and share with you more about this, how this whole process works.
Well, I appreciate being here. And I think from the community work and Jeff's work, and we're on the right track. I think that it doesn't come as a surprise to me that the intersection of public space and its catalytic effect on where people want to be, but it's pretty gratifying to see the community embracing it. So we have a short presentation here that Adam will lead us off on, and then we'll make commentary on the way.
Hey, guys. Adam Sidman, the Concord Group. Good to see a lot of you again. Really exciting to see all this work from our perspective. Robert and I have been involved with this for a couple of years with Michael and the council and team. And this started off really with an idea, I mean, originally, it was just looking at like one parcel, right? It was going to have parking and some other uses in it. And the idea is, I mean, as you can see tonight, has expanded a lot. I think that we're getting to a point, probably in the process, that is going to be really interesting and maybe really could be challenging, we don't know. And that's finding private developers that will actually be potential partners here. And so really, that's the phase of work that Robert and I are pretty strongly involved with right now. As Michael already talked about earlier, we've looked at the market pieces, we've helped push ideas around the strategies, right, and public space, amenities, the steps. All of this came out through the process, right, that all of us have been working on. And now we think it's time to go out, at least in the near term, and at least start talking to the private sector. There have been some discussions, but for the most part, it's mostly been, you know, in council chambers, right? And so there's a need at this point to go out. Because when we had a city council meeting last September, one of the things we talked about is this idea of being able to sell a parcel, right, or site, and using some of those proceeds to help offset some of these costs. And so that's what we want to do, we want to go out and see what the interest level is out there. So tonight, we wanted to just talk about the update, really the status of the work that we've been doing, discuss a little bit, really quickly, the RFQ process, and then talk about some next steps. So Michael took us over really almost all of this, but I mean, we kicked this work off in December 2016 officially, unofficially before that. So, I mean, just to give a sense of the timeline, it takes a while to do these things. And I think the community actually should be really proud of the continued effort here. I mean, a lot of times you see things start and stall. That's not been the case here. So it's really exciting to see this, and obviously now, tonight, we're here three years later in September 2019. When a number of us were here last September, some of the recommendations we had were, well, these are lifted basically verbatim. So utilize the marina steps as a catalyst to incentivize private development. I think we still have to keep that in mind always, right? That's one of the major ideas here. Doesn't mean that's the only reason to have it at all, right? I mean, there's a big community-based reason. But from our perspective, we do consulting and advisory for cities, but also private developers. We want to see this intersection here. We think it's important for the community and to bring uses here. Allow for the use of existing shared parking. Allow for the use of existing shared parking, uh, for private development concept. As, uh, as Jeff alluded to, the parking question is gonna continue to be a big one. And the, the great thing is you have a, you actually do have a lot of parking down there, a lot of surface parking. That's a valuable asset, uh, to, uh, to be able, potentially to, to, um, to incentivize developers to be, and, and business owners frankly, to be looking here. Find interested private developer to partner with. Obviously, that's what we're talking about and, uh, in terms of the RFQ process, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Uh, and then there's different ways potentially to fill the gap, uh, to build the steps. And I know Michael will, will talk about it either, either tonight or another time. Uh, last time, we had some next, we had a number of next steps, uh, to, to look at. And this goes way beyond what Robert and I are doing. So this was the next steps kind of holistically. And at that time, our work was essentially done. We didn't know if we would be involved with any of this next steps. Determine allowable uses, uh, very important. Uh, there's been a lot of back and forth over the last few years, actually, as we've done this process, about what uses will be allowed here or not. I would say that we, we have a list, we'll talk about it. It's changed a little bit over time, I think, kind of gone back and forth between what's allowed, what's not. But that's, that's an important aspect here, right? We wanna know what, what, you know, if we're gonna go out to the community, we need to be clear about what's allowable. Identify the preferred development strategy. That's been done. That's what we're, essentially, that's kind of laid the groundwork for, for how we're proceeding now, which is, let's, let's, let's pursue further the idea of the steps. And let's have concentrated development, development in the north part of the, of the marina. So those were pretty important decisions. Seems simple maybe, but it's not. And to get consensus behind it is not always easy. Identify potential partners. Um, that's really an ongoing process. Design the steps. Obviously, Jeff, um, uh, took us through a lot of the really interesting work. And I think the stormwater aspect is, uh, is really, really like a, maybe a critical piece here to how we link a lot of things together. Prepare the request for qualifications. That's what we're, we're really here to talk about tonight. Draft sources and uses or a finance plan. Michael's team's in process with that. The waterside analysis, we have a phase one done by the Wagner Group, uh, that Mark took us through tonight. Uh, and then some kind of timeline with a, a work plan with a timeline, uh, is also in process. So just to give us a sense for what we talked about a year ago, basically, and where we are collectively, uh, both on the team, the, the consulting team, as well as on the city side, uh, with these different steps. We, you know, we're, Robert and I are very involved with, with advisory work, uh, all around the region, in fact, around the country. So we bring to bear, even though it's not really part of the scope of our work, I mean, we're always thinking about what's the, you know, where's the market? And how does that impact where we're, you know, where we are in the process? So not gonna really talk about any of these specifically right now, but, um, there's, I mean, it's, it's still a very strong market, really driven by the employment growth we've been seeing regionally. I mean, just the perspective, just to put in perspective, we've been adding in the Seattle metro still fifty-ish thousand jobs a year? Maybe up to sixty thousand in some years, a down year is like forty thousand jobs. That's a lot of, that's a lot of people, right? They need places to live, they need places to go eat, so that's a regional number. Obviously, there's concentrations in areas and we hope to increasing, you know, ba-bring increasing numbers of those concentrations down here, right?
You know, there's two aspects that are, that I think are worth commenting on. The one is that the emergence of smaller hotels, uh, that have tapped into, uh, not just Airbnb, but smaller hotels that are becoming more viable economically, which gives me some comfort, uh, when we go out to talk to potential hotel developers. And the last one is, you know, telecommuting has been around forever, but I've never seen as much, uh, activity in smaller cities. And I think the, uh, my, my intuition says that it's become, it's always probably been acceptable for workers. But I think employers are now finding it acceptable. And there's lots of examples a-around the state where companies habitated here are opening up satellite. And, and so I think this whole notion of the affordability of Des Moines, the vision that's becoming together is gonna be our story that we'll be taking out to the development community.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. I mean, the, a lot of develop, a lot of pressures that are, that are pushing people in, in a lot of instances outside of the, the urban cores, right? A lot of those are price considerations, but some of them are quality of life. We think that Des Moines has a really interesting potential to capitalize on a lot of those trends. You know, there's always, I mean, we're, we're market, I'm a, I'm a market guy, a market analysis guy. I mean, there's, the, the flip side of it is that we haven't seen a lot of development in the South Sound still. And a lot of that is because it's still really hard to make projects pencil. Essentially, the construction costs are not wildly different in this part of, you know, the Seattle metro as opposed to inner Seattle or Bellevue. The rents or sales prices, depending on what you're looking at, are typically quite a bit lower here, which again is a good for attracting people. It can be challenging when you're trying to make these things pencil. So that's still gonna be a challenge here, right, as we look at this. The, the, in terms of the RFQ process, just wanna do a quick overview of what that is, what that acronym is. Uh, some, you know, talk about some key assumptions that we're, we have, uh, and some of the intended outcomes and, and overview of the timeline. Very, very simply RFQ, we mean request for qualifications. And in this case, the, the target audience really would be, I mean, primarily, we're looking at developers as a primary audience, right? Private developers, uh, to look at the two sites that Jeff talked about, right? The twenty-four thousand square foot parcel and approximately, and the ten thousand square foot parcel. I think another target is also business owners. I mean, it kind of depends on how we angle the RFQ, but, um, that's probably a pretty important segment here too. Because as we'll talk about with the allowed uses, um, some of the uses are off, that are off the table, might be the easier uses to develop near term. So for example, to develop office space in a market, you typically need to have an identified user or tenant. And so if we can get interested business owners in the conversation, whether they're here already or not, uh, is probably a really important part of this RFQ process.
We've also, you know, can, have all along and continue to talk to users and tenants that we can make available to, to developers, uh, who will need to have them. So it's, all of the above is happening.
So an RFQ is, is pretty different typically than an RFP, which is a request for proposal. I, I think originally we were thinking this might be more of an RFP process. But as, 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 uh, as we talked about it with Michael and the team, uh, here at the city, we decided that the RFQ really is the stage that was most appropriate for where we're at. Because we need to have, there need to be conversations right now with private entities, uh, about what's potential. Because the, the stage that we're at in terms of design of the steps and even just a strategy around how this works is still, still pretty early thinking. And so the, the stage we're at means that it's probably married best to the RFQ stage. Uh, RFQ is also a fairly low, uh, commitment typically for a developer or someone to respond to, right? Essentially, you're asking for more or less, are you, do you have interest? And who are you? I mean, that's essentially what we're gonna be asking. We're not asking for them to come up with any plan at this point. And that's the big difference, because typically for a request for proposal, you get much more specific. And the, the time commitment and effort and eventual, essentially cost, uh, both in terms of time and money for someone is much, much higher typically. And then it's also a lot more work on our end, right, on the city's end, to, to think about, okay, how are we actually gonna analyze that? So the goals, as we see it, at least for the RFQ process right now, are, A, to communicate to the, to the greater development and, and business world out there, the opportunity. Because still today, in twenty-nineteen, September, there's a lot of folks that we talk to that when you talk about the city here, they kind of give you a blank stare. These are people in the development community that are just, it's just not on their radar.
Adam, I have to say this. So between Robert and myself, um, the mayor's help at times and other council members, we've, we've done a number of tours with some very significant developers. And as well as government agencies and looking for partnerships and all that. And every one of them, and Robert, tell me if you've heard otherwise, but I think we've both been astonished that every one of them, after they see Des Moines, they go, we had no idea. And, and it's just undiscovered and, and people are generally really excited about the opportunity.
It's, it's just awareness and, uh, really understanding that the city is open for business. It, it has its act together and there is in, in emerging vision that excites people. It's really, it's really, it's really that simple. The RFQ i-is the right way to go for where we're at because, uh, we don't want, we want interest. We don't want to burden people to submit because we're in a very dynamic market. So we wanna get as much interest as we can. And the second aspect is, uh, one, I, one idea has been to engage the, the selected developer and users and tenants in the design of the, of the connecting steps. And there, uh, and that, we need that input to really know how real that is. Because there, there is an opportunity, depending on who they are, to integrate some parking. And we want, uh, you know, we're not gonna be the developers, but we want those, those landings activated. And so we, we want to get the development community excited about this, get their designers excited about it, interacting with the city's designer Skylabs. And so that's the other reason why, why, you know, we're recommending an RFQ.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. I think the, the ability to, you know, for, uh, an entity, whether it's a developer or a business, to be actually involved with the process is, is very interesting. It's also very challenging. I mean, it's not what developers are typically looking to get involved with out there, uh, or businesses for that matter. So, you know, again, it's part of this is communicating that there is an opportunity and trying to really spark the interest here. And, and get people's attention here. I can tell you that in the, in the developer community in the Seattle metro, there's people are just so, there's so many, there's just so much activity. And so much of it, so much of it is concentrated in, in a few select areas in the region that it can be really hard to get their attention for, for sites that they, they're not as familiar with.
Well, if we can get people here, uh, it sells itself, basically. So that, that, if you wanna make it really simple, the idea is to get the right people here to hear the right story and get them interested.
Yeah, we could've just had that on a slide, be done. So, uh, I mean, some of the key considerations for, for us, as we put together the, the thinking behind the RFQ, is, is getting target lists together. I mean, if you hired Robert for one thing, it's, he's got a good rolodex and he's good with people. But no, I mean, we have, we have a good list of folks that have already, some, a lot of them have already been reached out to, some haven't, right? And so it, you know, that is, 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 is a, is a big part of this. Clearly identifying the opportunity in the city's role, I think is gonna be an important piece here that we, I, I would say we're still, there's still like a, like a strategy discussion on that. The design of the steps, doesn't have to be fully, we're not gonna be fully done with it, you know, at this stage. But I think like getting to better clarity on that will, will be good. And I think we have a lot of great imagery already and concepts. Key assumptions that, that we, uh, that we have to talk about, the, the vision is probably one of the most important parts here. And then also the timing. And the timing can be like, just like literally, how do we deal with holiday time coming up? But I also think there's a bigger question of, you know, Robert and I were talking, like, you could, you could almost think about this, you know, do you, do you, do you get a lot further along, for example, with the marina steps design and then go out to RFQ, right? I mean, you could, there, there's an argument for that, I think. I, I'm not sure we agree with that, but I think that there's, there's at least a discussion around what the appropriate timing is for this. So again, the, the targets, developers, business owners, uh, also other partners, right, to, to, to raise awareness. Um, and, and some of the strategies for getting out to people are, is outreach, tours, as Michael mentioned. Going into our local and regional networks, uh, talking to, to existing businesses as well. So some of the key assumptions, uh, that will go into, into putting this together, so parcel definitions, right? Very simply, like, what, what are the parcel outlines? Right now, we have, for example, in the north parcel, there's a, there's a, at least in the designs that we've been looking at, and really, as we've been talking about this, I think, since at least last year, the potential to be either a little bit bigger or a little bit smaller, right? And maybe we can go out and be a little fuzzy, but I think the more that we can define that, it'll be better, right? It'll be a lot clearer to the community. Building heights, we're, we're going, we're still under assuming we're, we're thirty-five foot heights, right? The allowed uses, um, essentially, and I'm just gonna go to this one, 'cause essentially, the, I would say a year ago, I was under the impression that apartments and condos, for example, were, were, would be allowed uses. It's our understanding at this point at least, that they're not, at least as standalone uses, those wouldn't be allowed. As, but maybe it could be like small amount as part of a MU would be mixed-use project, right? So maybe you could have a few units as part of a project. Whereas commercial uses, for the most part, from what we understand, would be allowed. So again, part of the challenge here is that the market right now, if you're gonna, if you're, if, if we come in as mar, as advisors, right? We would say the market right now would, you know, probably phase one could build apartments, maybe condos, if they can get them financed. Those are, those are fairly easy to imagine. Retail, restaurants, uh, certainly can make sense as part of a development and, or in small doses. A hotel, we're talking about maybe like a boutique concept, right? The site's not that big, um, for a, for a large hotel concept. Office and to a certain extent, light industrial, those, those would ideally, well, at least the office would ideally not be speculative, right? Typically, you're gonna, typically, an office developer is gonna wanna find someone, unless it's coworking or something like that. Where essentially you, it's a completely speculative, you know, more or less a completely speculative model, maybe with an anchor, uh, one or two businesses that anchor it. Could have medical office, light industrial here, we, really, we mean maker spaces primarily, um, or maybe marina-oriented uses, but not, nothing heavy industrial of that sort. The, the marina steps is a key assumption, the city's roles we talked about, and then parking and maybe if there's any other incentives, right, to, 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 to understand. So I think this, we've, we've gone through it with the presentations already, but really the vision, right, is, is important. Because just going out and saying there's a, there's a parcel to develop is not at all what we're trying to do here, right? It's, it's really about communicating all of this great work that's been put into this and the, the real, like, the, the real idea and vision of what could be here. That's how we're gonna get people excited here, right? That's why I think the stormwater integration, for example, is really interesting, right? It's, it's a way to connect up into the, in the community. It's a, it's a, I think, a very compelling story. And I think the sustainability aspect will be, uh, could be really a big tie to certain corporate visions, right? And, uh, corporate state, mission statements, quite frankly, out there. But there's a lot of pieces to this, right? There's the steps, there's a connection to downtown, the stormwater, rooftop access, mixed use, the waterway improvements that we were talking about, the farmer's market, this idea that this could be a destination. It's, it's really exciting. So we're, um, we're really excited to put this together and get, and help get the message out there. In terms of the timeline, uh, so we gotta, you know, we're still clarifying some of the key assumptions that we talked about. Defining the opportunity, um, yeah, I think we mostly understand that, it's just kind of getting better clarity on some of these things. Pre-release, I think this is an important part, you know, before you go out to market, really checking in with people that you're gonna be sending it to and, and kind of priming the pump, right? So it's, you're not just going out cold to at least some people or some, uh, developers or businesses. Develop and refine the language and the imagery within the RFQ, send it out. Uh, and then importantly, figure out a, um, figure out a way to actually think about how we're gonna look at responses, right? I mean, is there, do we have some kind of matrix and way to think about it as opposed to just, do we like it or not like it? Right? Because it can be really, it can get really subjective, right? It's, it's good to have some kind of idea going in of, of how you're gonna think about scoring it, let's say, or, um, ranking them. Initial discussions then, uh, would ideally happen. And then you could either negotiate directly or you could go out to an RFP. There's different avenues, right? So an RFP at that stage, you could maybe, you would have maybe a few selected folks that would have interest and then you could go out to RFP. Maybe you really have one core, uh, group that's interested and you can continue negotiations with them. So I think that has to be decided. And then in terms of next steps, uh, as we see them, uh, so finalizing at least the core aspects of the design, which Jeff and his team really are working on right now. Clarifying any, any assumptions that are still kind of outstanding, uh, obviously drafting the actual language of the RFQ. Figuring out the timing, developer reach out, and then, uh, also something, maybe the order's off here on the soils analysis. But, um, the soils analysis is probably an important next step. We, we're not doing that on our end, but, um, it's probably an important piece to consider prior to release of an RFQ. Because, uh, from our experience, um, going out to the community, this is gonna be a question that comes up alongside with parking is like, you know, any issues with foundation, especially being right here on the water.
Yeah, I mean, the, the soils is something we identified before and that would be done on the parcels once they're delineated. So, so that, when, when, you know, when you go out, you've got those boundaries set and you have, uh, you understand the constructibility issues. And then there will be, uh, through Jeff and the city, ongoing refinement of, of cost estimates for, for, for the steps.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna give it back to Michael and appreciate everyone's time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just, just a couple of points. Also, there's a survey that needs to happen to identify utilities. So we're, uh, the geotech and the, the parcel delineation and the, and the survey. And I, I just wanna remind everyone that this was all tried before by the city at one point. But the, the, kind of the, the fulcrum rested- but the, kind of the fulcrum rested on wanting to retain the land and leasing to developers. And the result of going out with a fairly comprehensive, you know, package in terms of an RP resulted in nothing positive and no significant, developers that, you know, they were willing to do any type of development as long as we paid for it, which kind of defeated the purpose of doing the outreach. And so, this time, and we've talked with council before about this, about our economic development committee, but I'm going to ask you for a motion a minute to go out for an RFQ. But I just want to say that I think the difference this time, A is the quality of the consultants that are in this room at this moment, the amount of work and time and effort council and staff have put into this, and the fact that we own 29 acres on the Marina floor, and if we could translate a few acres into equity to build the Marina steps, the equation changes dramatically in favor of this being accomplished. So, with that, I think, I, you know, we'll take questions and comments and look forward to council. It's a little late, but I, we are going to request this motion be approved by the city council so we can move forward in what we've been doing for the last couple of years here.
Councilmember Banks?
I move to direct staff to prepare and issue a request for qualifications for a private developer for Marina redevelopment.
Second.
I would like to say, first of all, this is like fabulous. I mean, I'm really tired tonight, but I kept with you. I was like, you know, we've honestly been down this path, as our city manager said. I know we've conceptually thought about really great things that could happen in our city, but it was like this, you know, big idea, and what you've given us is something to really think about. And the research that you've done and the presentation that you provided, it's not pie in the sky, it's reality. It's, you know, I appreciate, especially you, Robert, your enthusiasm, because it's like, okay, well, yeah, we can do this. But essentially, you know, all your expertise has been excellent as far as I'm concerned tonight, because I wasn't there unfortunately at the meeting with the community. And I know there's going to be still a lot of questions, right, that have to be answered by the community members. We heard some of those today, sounds like you heard a lot at the meeting. So, you know, I appreciate what you've provided, and I know that our city is a diamond in the, not in the rough, it's just a diamond. It just has to be, you know, lit up from behind so developers can really look at it. So, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Banks, I just want to mention that I think, given the concentration of people who have self-interest in the outcome of the Marina, based on where they live and in every aspect, I think that you would have been, you know, pleased at the level of enthusiasm that occurred at that community meeting, the Marina development meeting. There were a few people who had, obviously have concerns, there's uncertainty, there's fear of change, all of that. But overall, and I would say Jeremy, between Jeremy and Matt Mahoney, I think we heard a huge amount of positives, and I know Susan and others who were there on staff also did. And I think Jeff, even the way you engaged in, Ignacio, generally speaking, it was very positive. So, and that was, I thought, astonishing.
And I think too, because Scott and I have had many discussions on what is that crap that goes down into the Marina and why isn't it filtered? And of course, that was years ago, so I like and appreciate the fact that that's being thought about. That's so important to the habitat, and it's really important to the city in and of itself because we're supposed to be responsible stewards, so I appreciate that.
Deputy Mayor Pennington?
It, I think this is a really good idea. I mean, we've talked about a lot of different things, and certainly the mayor and I can attest to what that, I wrote down soils because we used to play on the sandbar down there as kids. So, I know what's underneath that. It's sand. And so, but it's, to watch the evolution of that piece of the waterfront over a lifetime is pretty exciting, and to see where it's going now, and to really, to see something that is this group of folks working for the city and coming to us and saying, "This is what works." Because there's been so many times, "This is what we want to do, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to do," and it worked, you know, for obvious, for all the reasons we've discussed. So, I appreciate certainly the leadership of the city staff, working with the consultants to bring to council and to give us real tangible things to work with, and I really appreciate that. And I think this is, this is going to be tremendous as we go into the future, so thank you.
You know, if I'd like to, if I could, Deputy Mayor Pennington, I think the change in approach, from what you and I have observed from the history of things, is, well, let's figure out what we want and then go get somebody to come in and build it versus, I mean, so it's like, well, this is what we want. This is what we're, we want you to do this for us. But there was nothing in it for anybody in the development community, and a lot of what we wanted wasn't founded on anything other than some preferences that we, that some, not we, somehow in the community had bubbled up. I don't think that the community had ever, has ever seen or had this kind of, you know, this kind of detailed concept, or nor have they, I mean, one of these developers that came forward before wanted to put a hotel, but where the harbor master's office is with a tennis court on the top. I thought, wow, what an interesting, where would you even get that idea? You know, so, I mean, it was, yeah, I know. But these were the things that, you know, they just came in with whatever they wanted to, and both sides could never come to agreement at the table because what people envisioned wasn't necessarily what was being developed out in the world and what people were putting money and effort and time into, and, but they knew they wanted something different. And so, for the first time, we've had consultants that have experience, and I love the fact that we've got both water and land site and architecture that's going all the way to dealing with not just design, but environmental concepts as well. So, I just think that's, that's the thing, Vic, that's the big change.
That is the big change. It's huge.
And the public, the public is still involved. They were involved in the last process, but they didn't have anything really solid to guide them. But now, we're getting public involvement, and it's interesting because the message is really coming clear. So, I have seen, oh, I saw Mahoney, then I saw Nutting, and then I saw Beck. Oh, they don't want to let you talk.
All right. First of all, I was very interested in your presentation on recommendations of the Marina. I'm just going to make a comment that I'm looking forward to your estimates on the covered mortgage versus not, and I'm also looking, I'm very interested in what your recommendations on rates might be. So, I'm looking forward to your next steps, I just want to say that. But I thought you did a good and thorough job, and thank you for your time. I loved your presentation. I love the fact that we're using the stormwater from an area that typically hasn't been done, incorporated on the east side of Marineview Drive, and then bringing that in to tell a great story environmentally, which is what we're all after here. But to put it in that complex, and that was a beautiful design to tie both the city to the Marina, which is inevitably what we're trying to do. Love it, looking forward as you refine that process. I was impressed, I got to see it the other night, I was impressed then, I'm more impressed now, especially hearing it for the second time. I'm interested, I know there are some springs up there, and there is water, and I believe there's water running year-round, to some degree, so I'm not sure if that's been incorporated in the design, but you might want to think about that. I don't know where it comes from, but I know it comes out and it flows year-round. That's all I'm going to say on that, just making sure that's considered. Robert, as usual, spot-on. I know, I heard the incentives right off the bat about selling some of these parcels to help fund part of the project, get that, and even your recommendations to consider some or expand maybe possibly the uses of those particular parcels, I get that. Is there anything else, as we try to bring some of these people into the community to invest, are there any other, for lack of a better word, incentives you might think we should be bringing or looking at? I mean, obviously, we've heard they, it sells itself, but is there something else that maybe wasn't mentioned at this meeting? That's all.
I think the biggest thing, and you articulate, you articulated already, is just being open for business and being able to articulate how you get from point A to point B. That is highly underrated as an economic development tool. And the fact that you are all on the same page is huge because developers want to work where they're, they're wanted. And so, you already epitomize that, but I would be, I would just underscore it.
I just, I mean, I'll add from my perspective that as a city and as the owner of the property, you guys have a lot of ability to, you know, to have aspects to negotiate with, right? So, I think that that's going to be important, right? The land itself, the access to parking, and even things around like parking ratios, stuff like that, those are going to be big deals to anyone coming in. So, I think that those are, that's when like the nitty-gritty part of the stuff happens, and the good, the good thing is you guys have the ability to actually negotiate on those pieces, right? Or you're at least, you know, you have control over that.
I just want to dovetail a little bit on the Deputy Mayor Pennington's and Mayor Pina's idea. The phrase that sticks with me is right-sized. The last time we did this, six, five, six years ago, there were a lot of grand, grandiose ideas, and they were not right-sized for this community. And the fact that we've had so much community involvement, and there's so much more to come, these are, these are concepts, these are a path to get us to where we all want to be with the community involvement. There's absolutely, parking's being looked at, absolutely, public safety's being looked at, absolutely everything is being looked at here, and is, we're not going to take a step in the wrong direction, we are going to take a step in the direction that the community wants us to, with the help of our consultants here, to help guide us and to give you guys, the community, an idea of where we can go with this, right-sized for our community, not for somebody else. It's ours, so I just appreciate where we're going with this. Thank you.
You said it well. Councilmember Beck?
Jeremy's statement is kind of a good segue. So, of the 27, 28 acres-ish we've got down there, before we do the request for qualifications, isn't it incumbent to try to get the delineations first? Or is that just subjective to what the developer wants? Because I would think most developers, they're going to want to take as much of that and do as much as they can. I mean, do we want to kind of have some delineations of how much of this Marina floor that we are going to designate for this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that as part of the work that Jeff's group's doing with Michael and with our input, that we will, we will define, we will define it as part of the RFQ. It'll be defined, the parcels.
Yeah, I mean, I just would say that, I mean, the point I guess we have on here on the considerations about the parcel delineation is that, I mean, we know, we know where they are. It's more about kind of more precise definitions around one, maybe one or even both of the parcels, because there's, from what we understand, there's a little flexibility in, like, for example, on the north parcel, how far towards the water you could go, and on the southern parcel, how far south you could go. And so, we can, we can, we can put it in the box that we had in September of last year, where we can maybe be a little bit more flexible and think about expanding it. I think that, from my perspective from the RFQ, I think it'd be better to have it defined. If it's not defined and we're not going out for proposals, that might be okay too, because there's going to be a lot of, this is going to be a process of whoever you get, and they may come in and maybe they, maybe they don't want it so, such a big parcel, right? Maybe they actually want the smaller parcel, or, you know, have it scaled back. And so, I think that you're going to, you're going to, what we'll learn from the RFQ process is answers to questions that we're guessing at now, right now.
Just one comment along those lines, councilmember, that, you know, going through this process, there's a couple of things. So, first of all, I want to say that some of the components as to why we've gotten here, and I think Susan showed some of this to her staff today or yesterday, and they said, "We never got this far before." But the thing about it is, is that I think the absolute support of the council, the quality of the consultants that are in this room at the moment, and our ability to understand, you know, pretty much how to go about this by just calling Robert every time we have a question, is, is what moves this process forward. And I think the thing is that getting to the point where we issue an RFQ, and I think that we do need more information before we get to that, that engages a process of negotiation. And before any decision's ever made, that's something the council's going to weigh in on relative to all those questions. So, you know, it's, like I say, it's an ongoing, it's iterative, it's incremental, but you see movement forward, and it's because of the tremendous resources that we were able to acquire, and in all fairness, have to acknowledge the port of Seattle for resources to help us do this that we wouldn't have been able to do on our own, but jointly in a partnership, we've been able to do, so.
Well, I think that brings us to the conclusion. I do want to emphasize, I really do believe we have the A-team. I think all of the input that we're seeing is extraordinary. I think the conversation is extraordinary, and, you know, it's because of the, not just the interaction, although I don't want to minimize that, but the quality of the conversation and the work that's going on is why we're able to move forward, and I hope it'll help us move forward at a reasonable rate. I understand there are market conditions and things like that, that will affect us, and that's why, you know, I'm really proud of the team that we have on the city side because, you know, Michael, you and your team are extraordinary at trying to find the win, and I think this council is fantastic at not coming in here with an agenda and digging in their heels and saying, "I'm not going to do this, I'm not going to do that." And you, to everybody here at the dais with me, that is a difficult thing to do. But that means that we're serving not just ourself, we're serving the public, and I am so proud of this body, and I'm so proud to be part of it. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. So, at this time, we have to call the vote, yeah, we do. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Seven-zero. And that brings us to the conclusion of that portion of tonight's meeting, and we get to do more. So, council, at this time, we'll go into executive session. The purpose of this executive session is to discuss potential litigation under RCW 42.30.1101i. The executive session is expected to last 30 minutes. You're all more than welcome to stay. However, no formal action will be taken at the end of the executive session. I want to thank everybody for coming.